To call to order the Lakewood City Council Study Session in the city of Lakewood, Colorado, on December 3rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Johnson? Vincent?
Here.
Bita?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Royball?
Here.
Gutwine?
Skilling?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Labier?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this study session. And before we get moving into the rest of our agenda, I'd like to wish those who celebrate Hanukkah, happy Hanukkah, and take a moment of silence just to remember our 41st President of the United States, George H.W. Bush, who passed away this week. Thank you very much. Okay, first up, we have a presentation, Citizen Survey, National Research Center. And I would like to invite Lori Urban down, who is the Senior Research Associate. She's going to talk to us a little bit about surveys. Councilor Abel is really excited.
Well, me too, so.
Good. This is an important part of the community.
Well, thank you, Mayor Paul, and good evening, members of the council. Thanks so much for having me here tonight to talk with you about the results of your 2018 citizen survey. As the mayor said, my name is Lori Urban. I'm a Senior Research Associate at National Research Center. And we've had the pleasure of working with the city on its survey for over a decade. And I was the project manager for the 2018 administration. So as you all have been doing this for a long time, some of you may be new to the process. Some of you may be familiar with it. But we use these kinds of surveys, these perception surveys, to gauge performance. It's a window into your performance. It's a voice of the people that you don't hear from regularly, those residents who don't maybe show up to your meetings or give you a call or call city staff to talk about concerns that they have or issues that they have, or give praise to some of the things that they may be happy with that the city is doing. And this presentation is a summary of the very lengthy report that you probably received over 100 pages. So we'll go through that, and it talks mostly about the key findings that are highlighted in the executive summary. Feel free to ask me questions as you go along, or if you prefer to hold those to the end, I'm happy to answer questions whatever way you prefer.
We'll probably hold till the end, if that's okay.
Sure, that sounds great. So in 2018, we used the same rigorous methodologies that we've used in prior survey administrations. We mailed to a random selection of 3,000 households, and we distributed those surveys equally among the five council wards. So we mailed about 600 surveys to each council ward. We had 646 survey responses for a response rate of about 22%. This is slightly lower than what we saw in 2016, which was 25%, but is a pretty common trend that we're seeing in survey research. Regardless of the survey mode, we actually see phone surveys declining at a higher rate, although most survey response rates, the decline we see is kind of leveling off. But it still is a strong response. Usually, we see between 18 and 30% response rate for our citizen surveys that are via mail. We offered the survey to respondents both in paper form, and they were able to take it online if they prefer. And we had about, I can't remember, actually, I didn't write it down. We usually see about 100 responses online, which is pretty average for most communities. We did also offer separately, which you have under separate cover, but we're not going to discuss tonight unless you have questions for me about that, the survey to all residents to take via an open participation link. And we had a pretty strong response to that survey as well. Those results are presented under separate cover. We didn't merge them with the scientific sample, but you have those as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about those. The margin of error around all the survey respondents, the 646 responses, is plus or minus four percentage points. And when we're looking at comparisons between 2018 results and the 2016 results, that margin of error increases to about plus or minus six percentage points. So any difference that you see that's six points or more is going to be considered statistically significantly different. As we have in past years, we've provided comparisons to our benchmark database, both for the nation and for other communities in the front range, about which we have 30 jurisdictions in the front range. And we have subgroup comparisons, so by demographics of the survey respondents, as well as by the council wards. So as I mentioned, the presentation tonight is kind of highlighting those key findings in the executive summary and the report. So the first key finding that we found was that residents are happy with their neighborhoods and with the city as a place to raise children. About nine in 10 gave very good ratings to their neighborhood as a place to live, a rating that has been trending up since 2008, when this question was first asked. And it was similar to both the national and front range benchmark comparison groups. Lakewood as a place to raise children also received positive marks. Most are happy with the city as a place to raise children, and this is an evaluation that has remained stable over time, and also was similar to both the national and front range averages. We also gauged other aspects of quality of life, overall quality of life, the city as a place to recreate and play, and as a place to work. All a majority of respondents rated those as very good or good. And we saw slightly fewer giving the city as a place to retire those positive ratings. This was an aspect of quality of life that we saw a decline in from 2016 to 2018, but it was similar to the benchmark comparisons. And that decline may be due to a number of factors. Maybe there are some unmet needs that the baby boomers who are seeing kind of coming in full force in communities, or it could be due to some of those growth issues that a lot of our front range jurisdictions are experiencing, transportation, housing, those kinds of things. Respondents were asked what they liked most about living in Lakewood and asked to choose just one of the aspects that we had listed, and these are the four most often selected. Location by far was the aspect most frequently selected by respondents, followed by parks and recreation and safe community. Quality of neighborhoods also was on that list. Lower on the list were things like cost of living and the community heritage as reasons that they liked living in Lakewood. And all of these ratings were similar to what we saw in 2016. Safety is still a priority, as it is in every community. Respondents were asked to first rate the importance of a variety of characteristics or factors that are important in Lakewood over the next two years on a scale of essential, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important. And then they were asked to select which one of those was the most important to them. Crime prevention topped both of those lists, so we had almost nine in 10 saying that that was an essential or very important factor for the next two years for the city. And 27% selected it as the most important factor for the city to focus on over the next We saw about 2/3 of respondents rating the overall feelings of safety as very good or good, but this is fewer than what we saw rating as very good or good in 2016. This also was lower than both the national and front range averages. In 2016, we saw about 3/4 of respondents saying that the overall feelings of safety was very good or good. We asked residents how safe they felt in different areas of the community, both during the day and night. And as in all communities, Lakewood residents tended to feel safer during the day versus at night. However, we did see declines in both the ratings for safety after dark, so walking alone in neighborhood, as well as in commercial areas after dark. And compared to the benchmarks where we did have comparisons for three items, neighborhood during the day and commercial areas during the day, both of those ratings were similar to the front range in nation. Commercial areas after dark received ratings that were lower for both of those averages. Residents got to evaluate 12 specific services provided by the police department, and nearly all received very good or good ratings by half or more of respondents. The three services on the left are those that received the highest ratings, highest evaluations, with seven in 10 giving a very good or good responses. Several services saw some declines in those very good or good responses from 2016 to 2018, and those are the ones you see, I'm sorry, 2013 to 2018. Those are the ones you see there on the right side of that slide. And again, these are kind of trends that we're seeing, looking at when this question was first asked in 2013. Recreation is definitely a bright spot in Lakewood, and residents appreciate it. We saw high participation rates in many of the parks, recreation, and cultural events and activities, facilities that we had mentioned and asked about on the survey, with a majority having visited the Lakewood Park or the Bear Creek Lake Park. Parks and Recreation also was the second most frequently selected factor when we asked residents what they liked most about living in Lakewood. We did see usage of these three parks increase from 2016 to 2018, I'm sorry, 2013 to 2018, and by about 10 points or more for each of these. But there were some services or some facilities that residents indicated they didn't know were available to them. So the scale was, have you used it? You knew it was available, but you haven't used it or visited, or I didn't know it was available. And so about 1/4 to 1/3 of residents said that they didn't know these four parks, the Community Garden, Ray Ross Park, Surfside Park, and the Clements Community Center were available to them. So there may be a need for some increased education or awareness around those to kind of maximize use of those facilities and those centers. Lakewood definitely isn't immune to the growing pains that the front range is facing these days. We asked a new question this year about growth in Lakewood, different aspects of growth in Lakewood. And 70% of respondents felt that population growth was too much, either somewhat too much or far too much in Lakewood. And about 1/4 felt that it was the right amount. Very few felt there was too little population growth here in Lakewood. We also asked about some housing development preferences, and residents generally were less likely to feel that there was a need for new apartments or condos, with you can see only 16% feeling that there were too little of those, and more likely to feel there was a need for housing that's affordable for low and moderate income residents. With growth comes traffic, and residents have noticed that. So reducing traffic congestion was the third most frequently cited issue that they would like the city to focus on over the next two years, with about eight in 10 giving it a very important or essential rating, and 12% selecting it as the most important, which actually was the second most frequently selected, most important issue for the city in the next two years. So this is just a summary of those key findings that were highlighted throughout the presentation and in the report, that residents enjoy their neighborhoods, they love the community as a place to raise children. Obviously, recreation opportunities plays into that, which they also value and appreciate. Safety is still a priority and may need some attention, and growth is definitely impacting residents. They feel it, and they're looking for some guidance, I think, from the city on how that's being managed and how they're going to, you know, work around that, as every community here in the front range is experiencing. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you very much. That was a nice, short presentation, but it's actually a lot of information, a lot of great information that goes very far in depth. And I would say, just as a comment, those issues that we hear or that we see are really reflective, I think, as this body hears and sees, or that we see at the dais. One thing that I think stood out to me, and that has to do with people feeling less safe. And so to try to get a better understanding and see some of the correlations with what that means, or, you know, what's driving that, that could be really, I think, important for us as an elected body to understand. So I will go to Mr. Bita.
Yeah, a couple things. I noticed that you mentioned.
Excuse me there. I noticed that you mentioned about awareness, particularly as to the parks, and that there's some lack of awareness of the parks that are available and so forth. Did you do any other, does your survey go into any of the other services that are available from the city and our citizens' awareness of those numerous services that are available? Did you address that at all?
So when we ask residents to evaluate services, they evaluate on a very good to very bad scale, and they are allowed to say don't know. So they could choose don't know if they literally don't know enough about the service, they have no interaction with it. So looking at that list of services, and there's an Appendix A in the report that shows the frequency of responses for every single question, including people who say don't know. And you're right to suspect that for a number of the services that we ask about, a very large majority say don't know when trying to evaluate that service. So it is definitely something that you want to look at and pay attention to, both when you're looking at how the actual evaluative responses kind of fall out, but also if there is a really high don't know rating for a specific service that most residents should know about, that would probably indicate a need for some additional education or communication around that service.
Okay. I mean, it almost follows if your folks are not really aware of the parks, which is around them, they drive by them, and you would think they would be aware of those, then some of these other services that are not so obvious, you know, might be in need of some attention.
Right.
Okay. One other question on something you raised. You said that Lakewood as a place to retire was down, had declined to 59%. And I was wondering, in past years, what was that number?
Sure. It was 66% in 2016 and 70% in 2013.
And so if I understood from what you said in your opening remarks, that is a statistically significant change.
Yes, so it's a seven-point difference, and for it to be considered statistically significant, it needed to be six or more points. So it's kind of on that cusp, but it is trending down from 2013, so it may be something that is worth investigating, and you all probably already have a sense of what some of those needs may be. But we do see that kind of a trend in a lot of communities in the front range, particularly where we are seeing housing costs increase, cost of living increase, and the ease of getting around the community being more challenging.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. Really excellent presentation and way too many numbers. It was excellent. One of the things that I was curious about, did you ask the question about the, of the respondents, was there an average number of how long they lived in Lakewood?
Yes. That definitely is one of the demographic questions, and you can find that in the Appendix A. But I think the majority lived here longer periods of time, so 10 years or more.
More than 20 years was 31%, and then the second, or the other 31% was one to five years.
So I would think that that is why we see that, in terms of a lot of the questions about people that have been here a long time and seeing changes, because of the changes that they're seeing, especially for seniors trying to retire, I think the cost of living may be a real issue, as well as when you think about Lakewood has a lot of tri-levels and two-story homes. When you're gaining birthdays, sometimes it isn't quite as easy to make those stairs. So I think that may be another issue. So, thank you.
And we do, in another appendix, I believe it's C, as in cat, we provide breakdowns of demographic subgroups. So one of those is length of residency, so you could kind of look at some of those. So we provide it by length of residency, whether or not they rent or own their home, race and ethnicity, as well as age. And so you can kind of look and see at some of those ratings, like place to retire, how things are shaking out by those different characteristics of respondents.
Thank you.
Mr. Abel?
We, the survey seems to indicate that folks are very satisfied with our law enforcement agency, and yet they're concerned about safety, especially in commercial areas after dark. Any idea why they're concerned about those commercial areas and why they feel less safe than in past years?
You know, I think only anecdotally I can speak to, one, the fact that this is a perception survey. So you can look at your crime statistic data and see, is it true? Are we seeing more crimes actually happening after dark? If you're not, and this happens in other communities, pulling in secondary data helps kind of clarify some of the findings that you would find in this kind of a perception survey. So we find out the whats, but not the whys. So it could just be that it's people's perception of safety that is inaccurate. So some education around that. But generally speaking, we do just see that people feel less safe after dark. Darkness is kind of scary, as my four-year-old would say. So I think there is just an inherent feeling of being less safe after dark. As far as the decline over time, I can't really speak to that, but maybe, you know, the police department has some other data, or maybe there's some national data that you could look at as well, to see, you know, what's happening around the country.
I was going to ask if you had any national or regional data that would let us know whether that's a trend in a larger area, or if it's...
Well, for our benchmarks, where we ask that same question in other communities, we do find that Lakewood got a lower rating this year than, compared to the front range, other front range communities, or compared to the nation, where we ask that feeling of safety in commercial areas after dark. So we do have that comparison, but I'm sure there's other national kinds of crime statistics that are available, that you could look at to see how, to make some sense of your results.
Thank you.
Mr. Royball?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more in line with what Councilor Abel is saying, and I'm just thinking outside the box and kind of looking. Would it be fair to say that the reason why we're getting a little concern about safety would be that maybe the newer population that comes into Lakewood has not really been here long enough to really feel safe maybe yet, or not comfortable in their house or community yet? And just give them a little time, and maybe that will increase?
It could be. And if you, there's a Table 77 on page 83, we actually look at those ratings of safety around the community, so in those commercial areas, by length of residency. And you can see, there's an explanation about how to read these tables at the beginning of this appendix. But what we do see is that people who have lived here longer tend to feel safer than those who have lived here a shorter period of time. So specifically in Lakewood's commercial areas after dark, both people who fall into the six to 20 years, having lived here six to 20 years, and those who have lived here more than 20 years, gave statistically significantly higher ratings of safety than those who had lived here five years or less. So it could be that those people who are newer just need time to know and feel that the community is safe.
That's what I said.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Vincent?
Yes, thank you. I know we'll probably be discussing a lot of this. I imagine it'll be input into our yearly meeting, because as we move forward. I did not see, when I read, I think it was 204 pages, was this? So I read it all, but I did not see where we had something that was under the separate cover from those people who went in. Do I have to request that, or?
I'm not...
You said there was under separate cover, those people who just went online. I did not see that in my packet.
We have the results, but they may not have been shared yet, so.
Okay.
Then may be able to answer that question. That is the answer.
So just when it's available, we can request it. Okay, thank you.
The other thing I was going to say, I think we're also more inundated as a society with, I think, potentially, social media. If you look at Nextdoor or other different things, you're going to see that there could be, you know, a million reports of suspicious activity, whether or not it pans out to be something that's criminal, and its outcome may not actually be, and therefore can heighten the... can heighten the awareness to kind of living in a in an interesting area. Or if you were used to having a neighborhood that was maybe 10 blocks away from Lamar Street Station Plaza, right, where you're going to have a lot, it's one of our more challenging commercial nodes. You know, you may not have been aware, but with the advent of Nextdoor, you share 30 different neighborhoods, you're going to see a lot more. So I wonder if that plays into any of it. Ms. Vincent?
Yeah, I was going to kind of just comment on that also. I think if if council hasn't had a chance to read it yet, you may want to go look at those piece parts that that break it down specifically by the wards and how that impacts the question. There's huge differences in a lot of that, especially as far as safety, walking by yourself, lighting, all that sort of thing, very big differences. Thank you.
So my last question, and this just has to do with, I think, the participation rates and how you said you've started to see, and I know from the political side, surveys, polls, things along those lines, where people are really starting to kind of do away with that because it has not reflected the, you know, results on election night. And that may be much different. I don't mean to insult you and your product here. But what does the future hold? I know that we have struggled to get people to partake in surveys and and the accuracy of those.
Yes, it's a great question and one that we are struggling to answer on a daily basis. We, the research industry, as well as us at NRC. So, you know, I think we still feel there is validity in doing a survey of this kind of rigor and of this kind of scientific nature because it does bring in the voice of that random population of residents, those people you aren't going to hear from. And you'll see that when you look at the results to the opt-in survey, there are definitely differences in both the types of people we hear from and what they have to say. So there are definitely ways in which we're exploring ways to increase response rates, one of which which we've talked about with with Ben and Caitlin to kind of explore is called blending and looking at taking to increase the number of responses that we're getting. So taking the responses from the opt-in survey and kind of merging it with the with the mailed survey, knowing what those differences are and using the mailed survey as kind of the the basis for what the opt-in survey should look like. Some jurisdictions are moving solely toward an opt-in survey because they can hear from a lot of of respondents. Again, there's some, you know, concerns about the randomness or it being a non-probability sample where we're not selecting people at random, those people are self-selecting in to take the survey. But we definitely are continually exploring it and if, you know, we're doing experiments with with some communities, they're letting us kind of trial and error some things with their surveys, so if that's ever of interest. But we definitely are doing research on it, looking at what the larger research community is doing nationwide. People are still surveying even though response rates are dropping because there is still good that comes out of it and provides councils and staff with data that they can hold on to and say is representative of your community as a whole.
That's great. And I certainly think this is relevant. This is really important for our community and for us, and and this is 50,000-foot and I look forward to really drilling into it in the next few months to see where we're at, what we can do and how we can make things better. So thank you very much. Looks like there's no more questions. Ms. Hotson, is this posted online? I imagine.
If it isn't, it will be.
Yes, great. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
All right. Is there any public input on the survey? Nobody signed up. No public input. Thank you. So we'll move to presentation number four, and that's proposed lodging licensing ordinance. I'd like to invite Sergeant Alish from our police department down. Sergeant heads up our community action team. It's nice to see you tonight in chambers. You and your team are doing incredible things. And I'll just set the table that this has been something that council has talked about for some time, and the request was made through Counselor Vincent to take a look at this. And so I know there's some eager folks up here to dig in and see where we're at.
Yeah, so thank you for the introduction, Mayor. For those of you who I haven't met in person before, I know I've spent some time working with some of you and I know others from various functions I work with, but good night. My name is John Alish. I'm the sergeant of our community action team. I'm happy to say that our community action team does multiple things, including crime prevention, which was number one on your survey, so that's good to see. But tonight, we're talking about lodging licensing, and I think the reason I'm excited to present on this is this is something that, going back to when I was an agent and I was working on our Crime Prevention Bureau, I really wanted to see happen. I thought it had some major benefits for us as a community. And now that I'm the sergeant on the team and the chief giving me the chance to come up and help work through this and come up with a solution for our community, I think is an awesome opportunity. So what we will do tonight is I will do the presentation. I guarantee I don't have all the answers. So we have our deputy city attorney here, Jenna Roth. We have Commander Ken Perry, and then we have the chief himself, and we can answer public questions, your questions, as we go through. So but if anyone has any doesn't have anything to start, we'll get rolling. So. All right. So why are we here? As you mentioned, sir, it was at the request of this council to look at lodging and see what we could do to make some positive changes for community safety. So what we came up with as a lodging was a lodging license, but we want to take you through how we got there. So what are the benefits of lodging? Obviously, there's a historical value. Our hotels along Colfax have a long, rich history. We've actually seen that referred to when you go out to our Federal Center Light Rail Station. They actually have the images on the various parts of public art that include some of the signs from our hotels and everything. That's a part of Lakewood's history. Janet Young, our former legal advisor, worked heavily on Colfax Cruising back in the day, which people are probably familiar with, and and that was something that involved the hotels as well. So, long history. Also, it's a community resource. Hotels and motels serve business travelers and families throughout the city. When your in-laws come into town, you have a place for them to go that's not your home, right? Bonus. So that's a community resource that's a benefit, right? But then there's the economic benefit. So hotels and motels are vital part of our economy. They bring in tourism and travel dollars, not just the dollars that go to the hotel room, but the restaurants they stay in, the activities they go do, all those kind of things. So we got with economic development here, and they said in 2016, hotels and motels in Lakewood had over $75 million in gross sales, which is pretty impressive for a city of our size. The average hotel grossed about 1.7 million, and sales tax revenue for us from those hotels was 1.7 million dollars. So no doubt, there's a major economic benefit from the hotel industry and the businesses that thrive in Lakewood. Let's come to the negative side, and sadly, part of policing is often talking about the challenges, the drawbacks that come along with with various programs throughout the community. So in 2017, our total police calls for service at lodging facilities was 2,952 calls, okay? That is the amount of calls that is under the definition of what we call a call for service for this ordinance that you will see later. In reality, it's higher. If we if we included any call that we went to a hotel on, whether it be a cop driving through the lot to check on it, et cetera, it'd be around 4,000. So but we're looking about 2,952. Criminal reports that were taken in 2017 was just over 1,000 at 11:35. I want to go over some significant cases. These are cases that we picked due to their variety, but also their similarity. You'll see some some trends. I was the sergeant that was actually involved with this case when I worked on patrol. One of our agents is a master of getting stolen vehicles. And sadly, one of the best places to find stolen vehicles is lodging establishments. So he was watching a stolen vehicle in one of our lodging establishments. A female came out to the vehicle. When she was contacted, she had that gun on her. She was also a convicted felon and she had meth on her. So we call that kind of, you know, getting all three right there, right? Stolen car, gun, felon, and drugs. That's not what we want in our city. Another example, forgery counterfeiting ring located in motel room. This is one of the worst days for a cop because forgeries aren't easy. When we get in there, we will have piles of document scanners and sometimes copiers and stacks of paper and mail from 1,000 people that has been stolen over the last few months. And oftentimes, they commit those crimes in lodging facilities. They'll go to a room and they'll use them as their place of business while they're there. So here, we had a counterfeiting ring located in the hotel room. Again, methamphetamine and drug paraphernalia were found inside along with it. Here's another one. This one was particularly interesting. Homicide suspect was located in a motel room. He refused to submit to arrest. So when there's a homicide suspect, we don't take it lightly. Our SWAT team came out and used what's called explosive breaching. So we're not blowing the building up, but what we're doing is we're creating small holes to where we make them feel like there's no escape. It takes where they're feeling of security. So they created the hole you see in the red wall above. They created a hole through the door there. That's actually the door jam. After we did that and made our point, the hands came up like this and he came right out the door, right? So we were very effective, no civilians injured, very minimal property damage, but none of us want to be blowing holes in hotel rooms. Stolen vehicle. This one was a stolen vehicle. When two police agents walked up to the car, the driver got out and shot at the agents almost at point-blank range with a handgun. The agents were forced to return gunfire, and the suspect ran through the parking lot. The suspect did not survive, but luckily, no agents or innocent bystanders were hurt. This is a pretty busy area, so some of that probably is due to the time of day, that there weren't more businesses open and people walking around. Another one, a felony assault on a police agent. This one, another stolen vehicle. Occupants of the stolen vehicle fled the scene by ramming multiple vehicles and almost running over a police agent who was outside his vehicle. The vehicle was found abandoned in Denver, and the gun and meth were found inside. One thing I want to point out, we made sure not to mention what these hotels are. We're not trying to play the name game or the blame game, right? But you notice in two in this case and the previous one, stolen vehicles, right? So there we see one similarity. The other similarity is all three of these calls were from the same hotel. So that's something to keep in mind, too, that it it can show just how much these can be epicenters for crime, and that's what we're going to talk about. Another significant case, this is a gang-related homicide with a gun in front of the entrance to the motel. Ammunition was found on scene. The victim was a sex offender and a paying guest at the motel. So this was not someone who stumbled upon it or someone who was invited by someone else. This is someone who was choosing to stay there. One thing our crime analyst noted is he said, since 2015, half of our homicides in Lakewood have been hotel-related. So either staying occurred at or the victim was staying at a motel in Lakewood, et cetera. Here's an armed robbery. This one sadly proves that other hotels can be the victim of crime that's related to hotels and lodging. Here, a customer from one hotel went down the street to another motel and robbed the front desk clerk at gunpoint. Luckily, we found out later that a pellet gun was likely the simulated weapon that was used that was found inside the motel room. But I guarantee you, it didn't seem like a pellet gun at the time to that clerk. And it did, it wasn't treated like a pellet gun when we got the call initially. Again, suspected methamphetamines were also found. The last one here is graphic, but it's also important. We got permission for the agent to show this. This was where the our agent was a victim of the crime, and he gave us permission to show the picture. Actually, it's one more after this, my apologies. Here, we also see the problem of prostitution. So prostitution does occur in lodging in Lakewood. Here, the prostitute advertised herself online. This is something we frequently investigate where they advertise on on different websites online. Some have been shut down over the time by human trafficking sites, but others always emerge. The undercover police officer learned she was operating out of Lakewood. We did a sting. When we went in, evidence of ongoing prostitution was found in the room. Back to what I was saying, this is the last one here. So obviously, graphic, that is one of our agents. That injury, it was a stolen vehicle again in the hotel parking lot. The occupants of the stolen vehicle attempted to flee the scene. He's one of our canine handlers. The vehicle came around the corner, struck, he went to jump to get out of the way, ended up going over the top of the car and landing on his forehead. That's what caused that to get peeled back like that. His canine, who he was trying to put away in the car, he wasn't intending on using it. His canine, who he was trying to put in the way in the car, was so bent out of shape over this, just not knowing, my dad's hurt, is what the dog's thinking, right? Just like if you had a dog at home. My dad's hurt, who did it? And the the dog ended up biting one of our own sergeants. Because in an amped-up situation like that, without the handler controlling it, that's what can happen. So he is probably one of the nicest guys I know, and we asked him to show this, and he said, I'll come in and talk if you want me to. He's he's more than willing to do that, but we thought a picture was worth 1,000 words, as it usually is, so. All right. So what have we done in the past? We've tried a lot of things over time. As I said, when I was in the unit before, I had hopes for some change to try and address some of these issues, and I was part of some of those attempts to change those issues. So one thing we did was, we've always, or at least since I started here over 12 years ago, we've been dedicated to this sector-based policing model. And again, what that is, is just that our cops spend time in the area they work. It's not like a roulette wheel where they go, where am I going to work tonight? They are assigned to a region for a year, and they have to learn how to work within that year. Now, they can pick different regions over time, but they're supposed to stay in that same region for the year, and what that allows them to do is that allows them to get to know the neighborhoods, get to know the businesses, including the hotels. So that's the first thing. The second is frequent business contacts with hotels and motels to encourage cooperation and information sharing. Obviously, just like any of you that have worked with me before, once we get to know each other, we establish a working relationship, and we're more productive and we're more trusting, right? We try and do that with the hotels, too. And Patrol actually came up with this on their own, and they just said, let's adopt a hotel like you would adopt a school. And we'll say, that's my hotel, and I'll go say hi every so often, and maybe we'll develop a relationship, right? We tried that as well. In 2005, so CAT, with all its associated kitten remarks and everything goes along with it, used to be SLU, Sector Liaison Unit. And the reason we switched to CAT is SLU didn't make much sense and Community Action Team made more. But back when it was SLU, in 2005, we tried a Hotel Motel program with a variety of crime prevention tips and public training. In the 11 years since that, we tried again with Crime Free Hotel Motel, and we can talk more about that later, but that's a program. We have a very successful crime-free housing model in this city. Our our crime-free housing program is probably one of the most successful in the region, and we have people coming from various other places to learn what we do. We partner with Longmont. It's it's a proud program of ours. There's a subsection of that called Crime Free Hotel Motel, and we've tried that as well. So we tried doing that with various hotels in the city with minimal success again. So and here's why. So why haven't, if the Lakewood Police Department has a heritage of innovation, the ability to solve problems and make a difference, why haven't we been successful here? Well, a few reasons. One is the Center for Problem- related Policing. They're a group, a nationwide group, that reviews how you can make changes in the public and public safety, said that traditional policing styles do not work extremely well with hotels and reducing crime and disorder at hotels. So that's step one. But like I said, we're an innovative organization. We always have been from our founding, and so why haven't our innovations worked? The biggest problem is because they're voluntary, plain and simple. Participation in our current program is minimal. We have a couple hotels that really engage in the Crime Free Hotel Motel program. And what I can tell you is those motels have seen significant improvements. One of them I'll probably mention later does a great job. But let's think of this from a different perspective outside of policing for me. If licensing your car was voluntary, if obtaining a driver's license was voluntary, if paying taxes was voluntary, right? How many people would actually do it? Right?
I would.
Yeah. Oh? Yeah. I don't know if I would license my car because that's expensive, right? And that's coming from a cop. But if I didn't have to, right? So I guess what I'm saying is, it's hard to get people to do things that are voluntary, especially when they take time, effort, and money. Right? So that's where we are at tonight. We really need an ordinance-based program. We need to reduce criminal activity and emergency calls for service. Those slides I showed you of those various kinds of crimes, those need to stop. Half of our homicides being hotel-related, that's got to stop, right? Or at least reduce. We got to bring it down. But to do that, we need 100% participation from our lodging facilities. And the only way to do that is through ordinance. We wouldn't have 100% partici-- well, we still don't have 100% participation in taxes, right? Let's be honest. That's why we have the IRS. They get a follow-up. But honestly, unless we can get an ordinance, I don't see it happening. So what was our mission? And we brought this up at the beginning. We were asked to find a solution for crime and disorder that is commonplace at some of our lodging facilities and at a critical level at others. And I really do think critical applies here. So we developed an internal working group with people from all levels of staff and from all areas, and we said, what can we do to make a difference? What's worked, what hasn't, et cetera? And we researched different solutions and decided licensing was the best option. I'll go over why. So licensing was chosen for multiple reasons. And I think the first one is fairness and due process. When you have a licensing process, you have an opportunity for hearings, and you have an impartial third person who reviews any allegations or complaints made against the license, and they get to decide if they're valid or not and whether sanctions should be imposed. So it's not the city who's the licensing authority who's making the decisions, it's that neutral third party who's doing so. We bring up what we think is a problem, they review it and decide if sanctions are appropriate, and then they're enacted. Another reason licensing-- Another reason licensing is a good option is because we've seen other types of businesses successfully regulated by them. Pawn stores, liquor stores, adult businesses, marijuana stores. You know those little facts you remember down the road? I learned crematoriums are licensed in Lakewood. And we have examples from other municipalities, so let's go through some of those. We did some research. We looked at other municipalities to find examples of licensing programs. We focused on three. One, because it was close to home Denver. And then two, because they had pretty robust programs that were pretty open to us looking through them and seeing the nitty-gritty, and that's what we needed, right? So the other two were Indiana, El Paso, Indiana, and Chula Vista, California. Chula Vista, through their program, through their homework, their program implementation, and their study afterwards, they actually got a Crime Prevention Award that was nationwide for the differences they made in crime and disorder at budget motels in their city. So multiple municipalities across the nation have enacted licensing ordinances to including, you can read them there. I will note, Wake Park, Minnesota, has a great pie place that has straw barb. It's strawberry and rhubarb, it's my wife's favorite. Yeah. My grandfather lives in Avon, which is right north of there, so I spend a lot of time in Wake Park. So, just saying, there's a vote for Wake Park. Others on there, Tuckwillaw, Washington, saw a 60% reduction in police calls for service at their motels and hotels. 60%. If we could cut half, that's pretty impressive. Chula Vista, here's one, and we'll refer to it often, but that's because it does have that study that was done, so we can see the results. They did a lot of what we've done. Before implementing licensing, they attempted to make positive change through outreach programs, voluntary education and everything else. But they didn't see any change in calls for service over a three-year period. They recognized they needed to have legislation to mandate the prevention practices, and they focused on something we're going to get into later, which is called Calls for Service per Room. After the license ordinance passed, they saw a drop in calls for service generally of 34%. Drug arrests were down 67%, and overall crimes were down 70%. We also saw a reduction in police officer time at motels, $830 to $1,200 hours per year. If we can take away $1,200 hours per year sitting at motels, we can spend that on crime prevention and the other things that our citizens are asking for, instead of spending time at motels unnecessarily. So one thing we try and do at Lakewood PD and the city in general is we try and do this as a community decision and also include outreach and make sure everyone's aware. So we contacted all the lodging facilities in Lakewood that we had through our taxation division. We sent them a letter saying, "Here's our plan, please come to this meeting." And then the CAT team took out hand invitations to each motel in the city and delivered them to the front desk. So just in case it was an old address or something, here you go. We held the meeting on November 1st, just over a month ago, and about 20 people attended. And about 18 lodging facilities were there. Looking in the audience now, I can see some of the people who were there that night. We did invite them to this because we said you'll have a chance to have a public speaking option, so you can have your voice be heard just as long with ours. So that's, we're trying to engage in that democratic process as we do this. So the meeting included a presentation, much like the one you're seeing now, just shorter. A handout of the proposed ordinance and a Q and A session. We got some really good valuable feedback from it that we have implemented since that meeting in tonight's presentation. So we made changes based on that meeting. After the meeting, we also sent an email with answers to the questions that they asked, and they were posed. I have them in written form, there's a few of them. If you want to ask what some of them were later, I can, you know, kind of go through them with you. And then we also included a list of best management practices. I've already had one hotel fill it out and spin it back and saying, "What do you think?" I've had other hotels go, "Hey, we're really, you know, we're interested in doing this." We've already, just by talking about a mandatory licensing program, we've had more interest than we had from the voluntary program before. Oops, sorry. All right. So Calls for Service is defined. Calls for Service, I'll read this here and then I'll give you some explanation. It includes, but is not limited to, any and all calls for emergency services, police, fire, or medical, that result in a representative being dispatched or directed to the lodging facility, right? So that's anytime someone calls 911, "Hey, I need help." Some service is going. It's either West Metro Fire or us generally, right? Unless it's a gas leak or something, and then maybe it's Excel on minor cases, et cetera. The initial ordinance proposal we gave you, it will show that in our definition for this ordinance, it includes fire and medical. One thing we changed since then is we took those out. So when we're talking about calls for service that would affect you and your license, it doesn't include fire or medical, because if someone's having a stroke, it shouldn't affect your license. If someone is needing other emergency medical services, that shouldn't affect your license, right? Now, if a cop has to go out there because someone's intoxicated and the fire department shows up, that will be counted, if they're a drunk and disorderly patron of the hotel, right? All right, so related to this ordinance specifically though, because one of the keys about this ordinance and what we're going to talk about is holding hotels accountable to the amount of calls they create in a given year and having a standard upon which we decide is what is acceptable and isn't acceptable for a number, right? Here, what is a call for service related to this ordinance? A call to emergency services that results in a response by a law enforcement representative to the lodging facility, okay? So this would be, as the example states, a hotel guest calls in a loud party in the room next door. We go out, the room next door has the music blaring, and they're making all kinds of ruckus, and we have to get involved. That will count under this ordinance. Another thing that will count is any police-initiated call for service that results in a criminal report. So the example is, a cop's driving through the lot of a motel. They see a vehicle with no license plate. They get out and they find out the car's stolen when they look at the VIN plate, right? If it's a stolen car, it's going to create a criminal report, and it will be counted. One thing we took out that we initially had in there was if a cop spends a lot of time driving through the lot and they see a lot of no-plated vehicles, but they never get a stolen car or anything, we used to count that. But we said, "If no crime's discovered, it shouldn't count against them." Just because the cops are being proactive doesn't mean it should affect them unless we find there's crime occurring at the facility. All right, the last one is, and I think this one's important, is any police-initiated call within the surrounding neighborhood, which results in a criminal report that can be traced back to or is related to a lodging facility. So the example is a driver or a police officer sees a car driving down Alameda at 2:00 in the morning, and they pull it over because it runs a red light. And they're talking to the driver, and we find out there's drugs in the car. And we say, "Where'd the drugs come from?" And he said, "I just bought them at X motel." That, we want that to count because there's drugs coming out of a motel, and we want that to count against their total. Now, if we go out there and we don't find anything, that shouldn't count, right? But if we go out there and our cops say, "Hey, through investigation, we found out there was criminal activity occurring." We should count that. So checks and balances are important in any process. This is one thing that we really took to heart from our public meeting with the hotel owners that we invited them to. They were honestly concerned that things would get counted against them that weren't appropriate. And we listened, and we went through, okay, how can we make sure to safeguard against the possibility of them being brought in for hearings unnecessarily or anything like that? So we kind of came up with a three-step process. The first part is, cops will receive training on the new ordinance and how to use it and how to help document the source of police calls for service, not just the given address. So if there's a, if there's a domestic violence at the bus stop at the corner of Colfax and Teller, and then the female victim runs to a nearby hotel lobby and calls inside, and we get called to the hotel on a domestic violence incident, the cops are going to be trained, just because you're called there, you need to put in your report, "This did not occur at the hotel, no one was staying there, the hotel is not related to this." And that way, part two will be possible. And part two is, we have two crime analysts at the police department. They do a lot of stuff for us, probably a lot of things you've asked for before, right? Because when you go to your community presentations, how many break-ins have we had? One thing crime analysts would do is look at what you were asking for in relation to commercial, crime in commercial areas after dark, right? They could try and see if there's a trend. Well, one thing they're going to do under this ordinance is, they will review calls for service at a hotel or motel's address, and they're going to disregard any when they review it that are not related to the establishment themselves. So that domestic where they just came in, if they read the police report and the cop says, "This wasn't related to the hotel," they're going to take it out. If they read a call for service, and let's say we don't do a police report, but it's a loud party, and we find out that the loud party was actually a drunk walking by a motel yelling and screaming, but he kept on walking, we're not going to include that. The crime analyst's job is to, one, only identify those calls for service that actually relate to the establishment. And two, what we agreed upon was, when it's a 50-50, go in favor of the motel. Give them the benefit of the doubt when it comes to which way is this going. The third is, the third part of our three-part effort to try and have some checks and balances is, if the lodging facility is set for a hearing before the authority, they can present facts and reasons why calls shouldn't count. So if call load is the only reason, they can request the calls that caused them to be above that number. And they can say, "Hey, this one, we remember this one. This is one where we called it in, we feel we're the victim on this, this shouldn't count." On this one, da-da-da-da, whatever it might be. The hearing officer can listen to all that and make a decision based on that. So they have that due process. All right, so let's get into, I've kept on referring to this Calls for Service per Room. And in future sites, you're just going to see it as CFS per Room. I then wanted to do CFS PR, but Jenna told me that I couldn't have so many acronyms, we'd all get lost, so. Calls for Service per Room is defined as the number of calls a lodging facility has in a specific time period divided by the number of rooms they have, right? This calculation creates a level playing field, so you can look at hotels equally, right? From a statistical standpoint. It's a standardized way of comparing hotels as accepted in other municipalities and kind of across the nation as a standard, right? So for example, you can expect a hotel with 200 rooms, they should have more call volume than a hotel with 10 rooms, right? So we're going to level that playing field by doing this ratio and seeing how many calls they have per room. Then what happens is, when you look at using this in a ordinance, the municipality decides what the acceptable ratio is. So they're not saying you can't have more than 100 calls per year, because the hotel that has 200 rooms will say, "That's only half a call per room. That's not fair, we have 200 rooms, that's going to happen in six months." But on the other side, 100 calls from a 10-room hotel would be a little excessive, right? So that's why the ratio matters. So let's give an example. Hotel Alamo here has 20 rooms, right? They have 20 calls for service in a year. That's one per room per year. Hotel Baltimore, on the other hand, has 200 rooms. They have 180 calls for service in a year. But that's only 0.9 calls for service per year when their ratio comes in, right? So what that means is, although they may have 160 more calls in a year, I can go back real quick. Although they may have 160 more calls in a year than Hotel Animo, their ratio's better because they have 200 rooms, so it's to be expected. So if we say we're going to base part of our ordinance on Calls for Service per Room in this ratio, what's an acceptable one? Like, how do you decide, how do we decide what that is? Chula Vista said 0.61 calls per service per room per year. So that meant if you were a 10-room hotel, you only got six calls a year to police services. Then they lowered it to 50.5, so five per year. Their argument was, if 50% of the hotels, because what they found out is 50% of their hotels had that ratio. They had below 0.61. And they said, "If 50% of our hotels can keep this ratio, the other 50% should be able to too." It's not unreasonable to expect half to do what the other half is doing, right? Indianapolis and theirs, they said, "No, that's, we don't want to go that far, so we're going to do a 90-10 split. We're only going after the top 10% worst calls for service locations in the city, right?" So they said, "We're only doing a ratio that's in the top 10%." So again, the ratio is decide, in both cases, the ratio is decided by what their hotels actually look like, what a snapshot of their current community looks like. You're going to see that, we'll show you some examples of that. Another option is, you can just choose a number. The Problem-Oriented Policing Center said, "One is a reasonable number." It's like, in one of their documents they produced, they said, "Hotels should be able to keep it to one call or less per room per year." So if you have 200 rooms, 200 calls should be about right and should be below that. Those are two different ways of looking at what the ratio should be. So what should Lakewood's be? The working group initially said, "Let's do the 50th percentile." We liked that argument. Well, if 50% can do it, why can't the other 50% do it, right? After the community meeting and through further discussions, we realized that it wasn't the working group's decision, that we could, it wasn't appropriate for us to make that decision alone, and we should include public policy and decision-making in that. So we will give you some options, and then you can ask any questions once we get to the end about this and further. So these are our actual numbers from 2017. As I said, these are the numbers where our crime analysts have painstakingly gone through and removed calls that do not relate to them. And that worked out to about 1,000 out of the 4,000 being taken out when it comes to this decision. So the top 10% of hotels, based on calls per service per room, you have the five listed there. The top has 5.89 calls per room, so almost six calls per room per year. The Center for Problem-Oriented Policing says you should be able to keep it under one. They're almost six times that standard. Chula Vista's is a 0.6 standard. They're almost 10 times that, right? If you look at this, you'll see at the bottom, this is where the powerful numbers really come in. This group accounts for 32% of total calls for service, but it's only 7% of our available rooms within the city. So 7% of the rooms account for almost a third of the police calls, right? If you chose 10%, you would be at 3.9 calls for service per room as the standard. 25 takes it up. So 25 is, as you can see here, this would include anyone with 2.83 or above. Here, 45% of police calls for service at motels are from 10% of the rooms in our city. So that just shows you how management practices, clientele, crime prevention efforts, and everything else can really fall apart and create this kind of call volume from this kind of, this small part of our society. So that's 2.83. Top 40%, we skipped top 30 because we figured we were close enough. Top 40, you're looking at 59% of calls for service come from 16% of the rooms, and you're looking at a ratio of above 1.89 calls for service per room. When we go into discussion on this, I'll come back to any of these slides if you want to. We can dissect them, go through them. I can have our data geniuses go through it, because that's not my expertise, that's why I'm a cop. And then we can go from there. Top 50%, almost three-quarters of our calls for service come from a quarter of our lodging establishment rooms. So if we did the top 50%, you're going to be, you're going to be looking at three-quarters of the call load by looking at those 50% of motels. And there, we're looking at 1.41 calls for service per room. We discussed it as a group. Now, as we said before, our group, we do not want to say, "This is the answer, this is what we think." But we do have a recommendation, and we thought 40% seemed very reasonable. The reason was, we thought 25% was too lenient. You're avoiding, if I go back by looking here, by 25%, you're only capturing 10% of the hotel rooms that are creating this, right? On the other end, we thought 50% was a little bit too far-reaching. And so we came up with that 40%. And well, the reason we liked 40% is because if you look at it, at 59%, it captures six out of 10 calls for service from our motels. Six out of 10 ain't bad. So, that's the technical term, ain't bad. So that's our recommendation, but we'll keep going from there. So what does this ordinance actually look like? You should have, like I said, we submitted a copy with the draft one. This is a draft. We can open it to change. That's our business park out west there, right? Thank God for the internet, I can get photos for anything. All right, so the proposed ordinance. The lodging facility ordinance would create an authority. This authority, again, is just the structure we set up with a hearing officer who's chosen by the city clerk as an impartial third party to review license issues, right? It will require all new and existing lodging facilities to apply for a license. No one's grandfathered in. You have to apply for a license, you have to meet the minimum license requirements. With that in mind, we're not doing background checks on the license owners. We're not making this a hill you cannot climb, because we understand that would be unreasonable, right? So the application is owner's name and right to possession of the premises, that they, where they're at. We want a floor plan of their lodging facility to include a room count. That's important, because that's what we're going to use later against their call for service number. So we want them to provide that. If we need to, we'll check it. But that way, they're not saying, "You don't know how many rooms I have, I have, you know, this many. You said I have this many." We need proof that the location complies with zoning ordinances. And then we have our fee. The fee was set up in a discussion between the city clerk's office and what it takes them to manage it, and then an annual renewal fee. Some of that fee there is because we thought we're going to need training for this. My team's going to be doing a ton of inspections. Do we need any equipment for it, that kind of thing? And what are the year-over-year costs for this license? All right, issuance of the license. The city clerk is allowed to just administratively approve them. They look through the license. We do not need, we have about 44 lodging facilities in Lakewood. We don't need 44 hearings just to get them their licenses. The clerk can say, "Yes, approved. You meet all the minimum requirements." The license will be approved or denied within 30 days of acceptance of the application. The reason that says acceptance is because obviously there could be things missing. Let's say they don't provide the room total in the floor plan. We're going to say, "Go back and get us your room total." They'll go count their rooms and come back and say 32, and then they'll put it in, it'll be accepted. They have to renew annually. They have to renew annually. And then, if the ordinance is passed, once the ordinance goes into effect, they have 90 days to apply for their license. So all existing facilities have 90 days to get, to get rolling on this once, once it gets started. Mandatory meeting. So initially, because, again, part of our, our goal here is, is to create a partnership between the police department and these lodging facilities. Initially, the only mandatory requirement besides getting your license is if you're over the number of calls per service per room, you gotta come see me. And I'm pretty awesome, so that shouldn't be so bad, right? You see me, you're one of my team, and we go through some recommended changes. Nothing's required, okay? We say to you, "Look, your call for service number is through the roof, you got five calls per room in a year, this is gonna be a problem if we don't get this fixed. Here's how you can make a change. Start taking IDs from everyone. Start requiring that they tell you what kinda car they're driving. Say no guests after 10:00 PM, because we know guests coming after 10:00 PM are sometimes up to no good and often up to no good in some of these locations, right? We'll give them those recommendations. If they don't wanna follow 'em, we're not gonna hold them to it. This is one of those where it's like, let's help you before things go the wrong way. That's the thought." Regulation of a license. So we said it creates an authority, right? Let's say someone puts in their license application and it's denied. Right from the get-go, we're like, "Sorry, denied." The authority says, "Nope." They can go ahead and go to district court, there's an appellate process for any licensed authority decision where they can go to district court and fight it out there. So, the authority isn't the final end-all, be-all, say-all. There is an appellate process that's already in place for other licenses and would be involved here. It allows the authority to issue orders and preside over hearings against licensed lodging facilities that are in violation. So what all that means is if, if, if we find out that you have, it's been a year, we run your calls for service number and you have five per room, and you get, as a group, the city decides 2.4 is our max, and you're double that. It will cause you to have a show cause hearing, you'll have to go in front of the hearing officer and explain why you're above the limit, and they will make a decision based on recommendations from us and talking to, to you as an establishment, how to bring that down. This provides due process for the licensee again. They have a chance to talk about it. So, causes for license suspension or revocation, right? So some example of grounds for suspension or revocation? If they're above that maximum calls for service ratio by the city council. I think this is where we're gonna see a lot of our effort coming into play. Because if we saw that we're gonna make it based on a percentage decision, unless there's some drastic changes in year one, we could be seeing those people or those establishments at their year-one review, right? This is the second one, and this one's important. A significant criminal act has occurred at the lodging facility's premises. So a significant criminal act is defined in ordinance as an act or acts that caused serious bodily injury or death to any person, or an actor act that requires law enforcement specialized or tactical team response, right? If, if we end up calling out the bomb squad and the helicopter and everything else, we may be putting you in for a hearing. The thing to keep in mind with that is it's still just a hearing in front of a neutral third party. So they could say, "Nope, no violation, and there's no issue." It's just, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to request a hearing on the license. Also, other reasons you may have a hearing is the lodging facility is delinquent and city taxes owed, has outstanding orders from the health department. So if the health department goes in and says, "You have bedbugs and your restaurant onsite is unsafe," that may cause a hearing. Outstanding orders by West Metro Fire, if they have a furnace system, a boiler that hasn't been kept up and it's in violation, that may affect their license. The opera, the last one here is similar to the significant criminal act. It says, "The operation of a lodging facility is such that it is negatively impacting the health, safety, and or welfare of its guests or the residents or businesses of the neighboring community." To give you an example of that, to put it in just simple terms, is when the council asked us to look at this, it was based on some activity at some of the hotels we've had. An example of this would be, if you have a hotel that's known for stolen cars, and we end up having a stolen car, where the guy runs into the neighborhood and hides in someone's shed, and we have to call up the SWAT team to do gas rounds into that shed to get them out of there, I would argue that that facility is contributing and negatively impacting the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood surrounding it. It could also be a business. If there's a business nearby this hotel, and the hotel has constant fights, disorderly conduct, drunks on property, drug dealing in the parking lot, and the, the restaurant isn't getting the clientele that it should be because people are like, "I'm not going anywhere near that place, have you seen what's next door?" That would be an example of where a hearing could be put into place. Sanctions against a license. All sanctions are imposed by the authority. They're not imposed by the Lakewood Police Department, they're not imposed by the city, they're imposed by that licensing authority. We may make recommendations. And again, our goal in recommendations is not to shut places down, it's to bring them, their numbers down and make them successful lodging establishments, right? Because we recognize from the beginning of this presentation, there's a value to motels and hotels in our community, both financially and historically. So we're not looking to shut everyone down, we're looking to make them have less crime. We're gonna make recommendations, the authority will decide if they're appropriate or not. So what happens if they're found to be in violation? Well, generally, they're gonna have a probationary period. It'll generally be about a year because since we track our calls per service per room over a year period, it makes sense to have the probationary period be the same. It could be shorter if it's based on one of those severe criminal incidents, right? If we find out that someone's been running drug dealing out of the back out of a motel management office, if they're actually dealing onsite, we may set a much shorter probation period and be looking for violations in there, same with taxation, et cetera. During that probationary period, the licensee continues to operate with mandatory restrictions or requirements. So what are some examples of sanctions? Again, meeting with me, right? That's number one, that should be more of an awesome thing, as I said before. An inspection of the lodging facility by LPD, West Metro Fire, and the Jefferson County Department of Health. If, if we get complaints about something, we may say to our friends at the health department, "Hey, come look at this place with us, see what you see." The fire department especially, let's say we have a fire, we've had fires at lodging establishments before. What's causing these fires? Is it just people staying there who are lighting cigarettes and letting them fall asleep? Is it something more than that? Is it the furnaces aren't properly done, et cetera? Safety and security measures such as fencing, lighting, surveillance cameras, a no-rent list, for example, decided by them, not by us, but by them. Credit card-only transactions, that's a pretty strong one, because a lot of these places do operate in cash quite a bit. But that is one that could be possible. And then, security officers and/or off-duty police officers on premises. Again, these would all be approved and enforced by the licensing authority. Failure to comply with these could result in license revocation. So, I've talked a lot, let's go through them examples, then we'll open it up for discussion. So what does it look like for a lodging facility? Let's go back to Hotel Alamo. One month after the ordinance is passed, Hotel Alamo submits a completed application to the clerk's office. The city clerk approves the license administratively. Hotel Alamo's calls for service per room ratio is above the acceptable limit determined by ordinance, right? So if we set it at 1.8, it's above that. Because of this, they have a mandatory meeting with LPD to discuss ways to reduce that number. "How can we help you bring it down?" No mandatory sanctions are imposed at this time. Upon renewal of their license a year later, their calls for service are still above the acceptable limit, right? So we gave them some recommendations, but they didn't bring it down. My team goes in and inspects the property, looking for safety issues, poor management practices, other factors likely to contribute to that unacceptable ratio, right? That show cause hearing is held, and the authority finds the hotels in violation because they're above the limit. The authority orders the hotel to install better lighting and security cameras, and to install better locks on all the doors. So a good example for that would be is if you find that you're getting robberies in the hotels where they go from room to room kicking the doors in, often that's because the doors are made of flimsy, you know, they're like interior doors on the outside, and they can just kick 'em right in. So one would be, "Sorry, you gotta secure your doors better, you have to put exterior doors on." So Hotel Alamo is placed on a one-year probationary period. They comply with all the sanctions, they install those security cameras, they install the lights, and they improve the doors. At the end of their probationary period, they've shown major improvements, their calls for service has, is now within the acceptable limit, we've achieved our goal. No further sanctions are imposed. All right, Hotel Baltimore. Hotel Baltimore has been operating successfully under the new license ordinance for several years, their calls for service ratio has always been below the acceptable limit. So they're not over the .10 or, or 1.0 or whatever you decide. A husband and wife check into the hotel, that night a neighboring room calls in a disturbance, the police investigate and find the husband and has murdered his wife, okay? In the library with the candlestick. Under the ordinance, the murder is considered a significant criminal act, and a show cause hearing is with the authority is held, just because of that, that significant event. The authority reviews the case and determines the hotel's business practices and the facility did not contribute in any way to the homicide. So they say, "Look, stuff's gonna happen, right? And no matter what you do, if you're renting to people, they bring with them their problems." The authority imposes no sanctions, and Hotel Baltimore continues to operate with a license in good standing. Now let's talk about my favorite, Hotel Catastrophe. Hotel Catastrophe is operating in the city with a lodging facility license, their calls for service per room ratio is above the allowed limit. We do an inspection, and LPD finds poor management practices and lack of security measures. Show cause hearing is held at the authority, the authority finds they, they're in violation. The authority orders multiple sanctions, including better locks and lighting, and better documentation of hotel guests, to include requiring an ID and recording of vehicle information. Simple changes, right? At the end of that year-long probationary period, Hotel Catastrophe's calls for service per room ratio remains above the limit. And sadly, we find they haven't complied with any of the sanctions imposed by the authority. So they were told, "Get better locks and lighting, and start recording who stays here." We go in, they have no records of who's staying there, the bulbs are all burned out, and the locks are the same old locks that were there before. There's another show cause hearing. Additional sanctions are imposed to include credit card-only sales, again, one of those higher-level ones to say, "Things aren't changing, and things aren't going well, we need to make, we need to make some major differences." And armed security during peak hours, as defined by when the crimes are occurring. Due to their failure to comply previously, the authority sets mandatory compliance dates for all previous and new sanction guidelines. So they say, "You will install the locks by January, by February 2nd. We'll come out and check," right? That kinda thing. The authority warns Hotel Catastrophe, "Further noncompliance may result in license revocation." At the end of the second probation period, Hotel Catastrophe has not complied with all sanction ordered, and the calls for service per room ratio remains above the allowed limit. The authority revokes their lodging facility license, and they can no longer operate as a lodging facility. So that is the ultimate penalty, is if, if we do all this work, years of working with you, that's what can happen. All right, so that's, that's what can happen. But what's the partnership benefits? So the goal of a lodging license program is develop a mutually beneficial relationship between the city and lodging establishments, right? We've tried that voluntarily, now we're gonna impose you spending time with me, right? So benefits of the lodging facility license can include lower crime and disorder at the facility, which is good for business, a direct contact with the police department, the cap team. And then this is the really neat one, this is something that's kind of at the core of our Crime Free Multi-Housing Program. Daily calls for service reports delivered electronically to ownership and management. That's great for a number of reasons. And we have some hotels that do, we have, like I said, we have, I think, two hotels that actively participate in our Crime Free Hotel Motel. They get 'em daily, and they've said it makes a huge difference. Because, one, they know what's going on all the time. Two, if they have a problem with the night manager, when the night manager's like, "No, everything was swimmingly," and they go, "The cops are out here six times." That's not swimmingly, right? They can address management issues, right? And then finally, there's not an excuse for, "We didn't know," right? "We had no idea." Well, let's look at what you receive day after day after day after day. So, that's some of the benefits. All right. Here we go. So now, we'll open it up for discussion?
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a, an incredible, actually, that was a great presentation. And before we start going into questions and comments, I, I just wanna re-emphasize that we have some of our hotel owners here tonight, that, that the goal is certainly to work hand-in-hand with our businesses and find a, a nice way that we can ensure that you're able to operate and that people are safe. And so I hope we can strike that balance. But I can tell you, there's just not a lot of tolerance for what continues to happen. And, and you mentioned, from 2005 to 2016, we reached out and tried to get people to voluntarily do that. Those numbers reflect that nobody's really taken this program seriously. And that picture of our police agent is just one of many pictures that could be shown the night of people being injured, sex trafficking, drugs, all of these different things that are going on. And we wanna have a safe community, and we want you to be a partner in all of this. I will mention, we do not have a helicopter, we borrow other people's, so please. I don't want... We don't want that phone call coming. But, um, I, I think you did answer some of my questions. I met with one of the operators, as well as the Lodgers Association this week, to kinda get some of their feedback. And I think you have addressed some of their questions, which had to do for, with emergency calls. But the two questions, I guess I have victim of crime, so when the hotel is actually the victim, and they need to call vandalism or something, they're being proactive to say, "This is happening, what do we do?" So that's one question, how do we address that? And then the second one is, the, the larger one that looms is, are we gonna discourage operators from calling the police?
So I think to answer both of those, I'd start with the victim of crime piece. Obviously, we, we never wanted to sway someone from calling the police when they're victim of a crime. But I'll do it, oh, sorry. There we go. I'll do it to an analogy, if a bank doesn't have a bank vault, and they're constantly getting robbed, we want them to call when they get robbed, but we're gonna expect them to make some changes to stop the robberies from occurring. If they're keeping stuff in a brown paper bag in the back room, that's not good management practices, right? We understand that our hotels, as I mentioned in one of those examples, we have a hotel where they rented one guest, and they went down the street and robbed the other guest at gunpoint. We went out, we took care of the same police service, right? We gave them everything they needed. What we wanna do is say, is there are ways that we can avoid that? We all recognize when we go into a convenience store that has the glass protecting the clerk, they've done that for a reason compared to stores that haven't. They're recognizing a need to make a difference. What we're looking to do is help, help push that, making that change, right? And then again, one thing I'll go back to is the licensing authority piece. If someone is truly the victim, and they feel like we're unfairly counting against them, they can bring that up to the licensing authority and say, "Hey, wait a minute, I didn't have anything to do with this, and I can't be held accountable for this." One example we came up with is, like, a drunk just wanders into their parking lot. That could happen anywhere to anyone, right? Well, they can bring that up in the hearing, right? And say, "Well, wait a minute, that, I can't control that, you know? That's not against me." And the hearing officer, they say, may say, "I agree, if you strike all those, what's their calls for service number?" That's that due process piece, right? Also, I do say, and I tell this to people often, since I'm, since I'm the sergeant over the crime prevention unit, I tell people, when you look at a, when you look at a business or a, a strip mall or something that's rundown and, and not well-managed, how often are they victims of the crime? And how often do you see crime happening there compared to the place that's well-lit, clean, occupied, all those kinda things, right? So that's something we impress upon them too, is management practices make a difference in the likelihood of victimization. But even if you're the victim and you're doing everything right, it may count against you at first, but that hearing is to help avoid that, right? And say, "Wait a minute, that's not, that's not reasonable." And that's why we have the hearing in place. The second question was your, about dissuading them from making calls, right? And I think, again, there, one thing, that's an obvious possibility, and, and the POP guide, the Problem-Oriented Policing Community Center guide said, "You have to watch for that." And you may actually have to go do surveys of your motels to make sure that management is saying, "Don't call the cops when you check in," right? "Don't call the cops, we're getting counted." Because that's not something we want, we want an honest answer. And again, my hope is, through the community presentation, through this open dialogue where they have a chance to, and through our transparent process, they can see that if it's truly not something that's in your control, there's a process to make sure that that's heard, that it's not just an automatic answer. So I think that's the answer to those two.
Thank you. So, Ms. Vincent?
I have several questions, but we should just keep them to two or three at a time so everybody can get a chance. Okay. One is, as you said, that the fire codes or fire would not be counted, calls for service for fire?
Yes.
What about any violations that our, our fire code violations counted?
Yeah, so I think the way to think about is this, day-to-day calls to the fire department, if someone calls in, if someone calls in that someone's having a heart attack, that's not gonna be counted. If someone calls in that there's a fire, the fire department's gonna get called out, fire investigators are gonna come out to investigate that fire. If they find that it was due to something that involved the property, our ordinance allows us to cause a hearing to occur because of that, because we say if they're not in compliance with fire code or fire regulations, that could cause a hearing. So that's the way that those are brought in.
Okay, so that would then?
That would then count. Again, too, once a year, commercial businesses open to the public and all public areas are required to have their facilities inspected by the fire marshal. They're limited in scope, but if they go in and find something and say, hey, you got a boiler in here that's not vented properly, this is gonna get someone hurt, that could cause an ordinance violation too. So I guess what I would say is take out the call, the calls for service piece doesn't apply nearly as much to the fire section, because we recognize, especially for hotels that are around care centers, hospitals, urgent care where people may be staying while they're receiving care, we didn't want them to be adversely impacted by medical calls for service.
Okay. Thank you. And before I forget, great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I really appreciate it. This answers a lot of questions. Where do, you talked about possible sanctions.
Yes.
Many of the hotels that you showed on here, I know, do nothing but accept primarily vouchers.
Yes.
From, from prisoners.
Yeah.
That are released. Where does that fit into this?
I think, I think that could be an angle of the management practices. One of the benefits of partnering with the police is if they're receiving vouchers for like parole clients or, we can work with their parole officers directly. So if they're seeing negative behavior by the parole officer, by the parolees, the parolees should be, being talked to by their parole officers. And by having a relationship with us, we can make that connection. So what she's talking about is oftentimes parolees, when they get out of jail, are given vouchers to try and get stable housing and transition, and if they're causing some of those issues. Another opportunity is, one thing that was discussed, I met with someone who deals with housing and homelessness, is they said, we do vouchers too, how's that gonna affect us? So we're already talking about that too, and how we can work with them. So those have been considered.
Okay, whether it's fact or whether it's perception, and I do, I am on the JCCB and it's often known that those people, oh, you'll find them at XYZ Colfax or hotel on Colfax. So, and that's the crim, or people who've just been released, not so much the homeless vouchers that they're talking about.
Yeah, and I think what, I think this creates an opportunity, because like I said, what, one thing we as cops love to do is work with our partners in parole. And we want to see people who are on parole succeed, because that's part of the justice system, right? But we also want to keep an eye, so it gives us the dual option, right? Because then if we're in touch with our managers, if our managers and us are on good terms and they say, hey, I've been having a problem with room 203, can you look into it? Oh yeah, he's on parole, let me call his parole officer. Hey, they, they got, they got people coming in and out of their room all night. Ooh, let's do a, let's do a compliance check. They go in and they find drugs in the room. Boom, problem solved.
Okay, great. Well, not great, but.
Yeah, no. Great in the cops sense.
Yeah. You're talking about these hotels getting licensed. There's some on here who are way beyond the, what would be the violations. I had a gap, I guess, in the presentation. Would that already be looked at prior to them getting the license or does like everybody start at ground zero with a license?
So every, the agreement is no one should be, we are not holding anyone accountable for the previous activity, except for that mandatory meeting if they're over the limit. So if I am Hotel X, and Hotel X is 2.6 calls per room, and you, you as a group and we as a city decide two is the answer, the only thing they have to do is come in and talk to my team to start and find out voluntary solutions. But now what they know is with that license, they understand I am operating under a guideline that if I'm over the two at the end of the year, there's gonna be some sanctions possibly imposed. They have that year to make the changes. If they don't and they're over the limit, they'll probably go to hearing and have sanctions imposed.
Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skilling?
I also have a lot of questions, so we can either, and I understand this is an ongoing discussion and we can go offline and after tonight ask, I'm sure.
Yep.
Far more questions that we'll think of.
Should I get a stool?
Yes. I, I was thinking the same thing as Mayor Paul was, and I think just to kind of circle back to that point, the chilling effect that this would have on motel hotel operators actually reporting calls. I could see either hotel vigilantes or some self-help that we probably don't want to see. I think that we need to maybe come up with an actual solution to that. I don't know if it's a point system. If it's the hotel operator that makes the call, they should be rewarded for doing that, because I could, you would certainly be de-incentivized from making that call if you're the hotel operator. So I think we need to do more than just hope that it doesn't have that effect. I mean, we've recognized that as a big, that's a big potential, so we probably need to figure something out with that. And a lot of it's gonna go unreported. We're not even gonna know what calls weren't made, or that's what I would be concerned with.
I think to answer that, so there is a debate, and it, and it is whether or not you should include calls made by the motel ownership, hotel or motel ownership, in that call for service number, right? Because you could actually exclude them entirely and that would automatically possibly eliminate that concern, right? If you said, if the management's calling in, we're not gonna count it. The counterargument to that and the problem, and the reason we don't recommend that is this, one thing that experts caution against is having the public safety division becoming de facto private security for the motels. Because often what we see happens is, is the motel owner knowingly rents to high-risk clientele, and instead of hiring private security or someone to address it like any other business might, they just know, the cops are a phone call away and they'll make my problem go away. And that's the problem we're trying to avoid, because the problem is we do a ton of, hey, this person hasn't paid, I want him out. We go out there that morning, boom, they're gone. Hey, this person's a drunk, they're causing problems, I want him out. We go out there, they take care of it. So, so it's a balance, right? Because the problem is if we're, if we are taking away, if we are using that extra amount of time that I mentioned is lost to the motels and their crime and disorder, if we are taking that time away from the rest of the public, because they're not using good management practices to avoid that occurring in the first place, that can be a major detriment. And so that's why we want to include those calls for service. Now, there is, there is discussion, we've seen it in here, about how you could incentivize in other ways participating, whether it be tax breaks or, you know, whatever you can think of. There's other options as far as that goes. But from our purposes, what we decided was best is, we recognize that a lot of these establishments do manage in a way because of their number. We're not worried about the hotels that have a one call for service ratio, worried about the ones that have the fours, the sixes, the threes, the twos. And I guarantee you, there's management practices that are occurring that is inviting that in. And if we cater to them by just being their de facto security, that's a problem as well. So that would be the argument in return. But I think to your point, sir, it's worth looking at, how do we, how do we avoid that as much as possible? Because I agree, I don't ever want someone to go, I'm not gonna make that call, because I don't want this to count against my total.
And when their business is on the line.
Yep. No, I get it. I get it.
So that was just the point to follow up with the mayor on that. Some of the other questions following up with Councilman Vincent, I was thinking, when you roll this out, these folks that have a two, two and a half, three and a half, four CFS right now, would it be phased, would it be some kind of phased rollout? Because it seems like it would be pretty difficult, somebody who's been operating for years and years at a four, and now we're gonna say, well, you gotta be at a.
One and a half.
Point five or one. I mean, that's, that may not be realistic.
Yeah.
So is there going to be a phased rollout of this, or is it gonna be all at once? I don't care who you are, if you're the Alamo or catastrophe.
You're a nine, I don't care if you're a two, right?
Right.
Yeah. Sir, to answer your question, I think the thought process is, that's why the, currently as constructed, we don't have like a finite timeline board. It's like you get two probationary years and at that, you're done, right? We haven't set that end date. So it's up to the licensing authority to make that decision. So the authority should say, wait a minute. Like for example, hotel catastrophe, let's say instead of being that, the only catastrophic thing about him is they're a six. And that first year in, they go to the hearing officer and they've brought it down by three, and they're making positive steps. I would even encourage the hearing officer to say, well, look, we're making some positive steps, what can we do to encourage more? So some of that's built into the hearing process, not, not necessarily into the rollout of the program, because I'm gonna say that the ones that need the most are the ones that have the highest volume. Those are the ones we need to get to as quick as we can.
And that's a good segue to my last question. We've talked a lot about, and you've just mentioned, the burden that would be on the hearing officer. And when I say burden, I mean, there's just, they've got a lot of discretion. What is your experience with these other jurisdictions with how busy these hearing officers are? I could envision these hearings taking place fairly regularly.
Yeah.
If, I mean, there's a lot of hotels and motels in the city, you brought a list of a lot of hotels that would already be well, well over the limit. How does that work with the hearing officer? It sounds like we need more than just saying the clerk and hearing officer. We may need a more robust system in place, which comes with a cost, time. So what are other jurisdictions doing with that, do you know?
Do you have any answers to that, Commander Perry or Jenna? Do you have any answers to that as far as what you've heard from them about how much?
We have not, we weren't anything on that issue at all.
Yeah.
But we could follow up.
We could, we could definitely follow up, and I also think I'd add that that, that can be part of the decision-making process and where that number lies, right? Because we can, we can make it, that can be a part of the decision-maker and where you decide the call for service number should, could be two, for example.
Because in your last example, you were talking about the hearing officer, we had the person starting it, or the hotel starting at six and they're down to a three, and so there's a lot of oversight by the authority over that. That's gonna take a lot of time and continuing involvement. So it's not a one-off that we have a hearing one time a month and we hire a, a hearing officer to come in for that. It sounds to me like this could be something that's in place and being utilized frequently.
Yeah, and I think that's one reason the chief came to the council recently and asked for another member on my team, was recognizing the staffing considerations that would going into inspections. It was decided that we need that additional team member to help with the realities of this. And that would also be a work in progress too. If we identify there's a higher workload, we'd have to address it at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bita?
Thank you, Mayor. I too share the concern of the mayor and Counselor Skilling on the scheme of this ordinance would be to disincentivize the owners from, from cooperating and participating with law enforcement. I think realistically, if, if what you're really wanting is their assistance and cooperation, I, I think this, this doesn't, is not gonna do it. And so I think you need to recognize that and for what it is. I don't know what the answer is either. I could see that possibly what would happen is that they go to, the owners go to some sort of private security, maybe a pooled private security or something that they use when they have a problem. And I don't know if that's something you want to encourage or not, that, that takes law, you know, law enforcement out of the, out of the loop, and then I don't know if that's what you want. The other thing that I could see happening in that situation would be that only the most serious problems end up in your lap. Again, you know, they take care of the small things that they can, but, you know, sometimes, you know, something escalates beyond their control, then you're gonna get called in. And again, I don't know if that's what you want to encourage. So I'm, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about that, about that, that, that part of the thing. The rest of it is, is, I think makes a lot of sense. And I, and I, by the way, I did appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I just kind of like to weigh in on that. I think what, a lot of what you saw weren't motels calling us, saying there's a stolen car in my parking lot, there's prostitution going on. A lot of these activities are found by the police departments. So I don't know if the disincentivizing them to call us is, is gonna be an issue, because frankly, they're not calling us now. You know, we're recovering hundreds of stolen cars per year at these hotels, they're not calling us. They call us on some serious situations. So yes, so there may be a little bit of that. But I think it's also like, you know, I think we talked about alarms before, when we, you know, we responded to alarms before, 99% of the alarms were false and they're, and basically the alarm companies were selling a service that we were, we were enforcing. The public was enforcing. So there could be a disincentive for them to call us. There could be, but they're not calling us now. So I think if you look at those, those cases we showed you, where our police agent was injured, the hotel didn't call us. The case where the, we found a stolen car and the suspect ran and we had to use the SWAT team to, to get him out of a house or a shed, the hotel didn't call us. You know, now when there's a shooting in the parking lot, or someone's murdered in a hotel, they call us, but they're not really calling us that often. So it could, it could be an issue. You know, I guess the philosophy here that we're looking at is, you know, we're, we're trying to get them to have some business practices that, you know, that we, that are responsible, that they're not renting to individuals that are creating these problems and things like that. So, yeah, there's a trade-off. I, we see that, but I don't think that we, as a, as a working group, looked at that as it was such a hill that we couldn't overcome that, so.
Thank you. And to add to your other question about that, you mentioned that, security, do we want to involve them? That may be one of the sanctions that's imposed. I mean, we're not opposed, you know, large corporations have security, loss prevention otherwise. That's a necessary step sometimes when they recognize they have a, you know, a need, a risk, a threat. So as long as it's professional and it's run well, we're all for it. And one of our jobs is gonna be to confirm that that's occurring. And like we said, surveying the, occasionally we could serve, if we get a hint that, like if calls drop off precipitously at a location, we may go out and survey that and see if there's a business practice where they're trying to hamper citizens from calling in.
A follow-up. On the other jurisdictions that have adopted similar laws, did you get any feedback on that as to whether or not that's a problem? Either with them getting their own security and it being effective or disincentivizing the, the owners? Did you, did you get any feedback or information back on those, that it was a problem or anything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we did from Chula Vista or Indianapolis, who we talked to mainly, right?
No, there were a few municipalities that did not count the calls for service that were generated by the management, but for the most of them, they did.
Come on down.
Yeah.
Good evening, welcome.
Ken Perry with the Police Department, I'm a commander, and we looked into this, and some of the municipalities did not count the calls for service for management, but most of them did. But I would just mention that even if you eliminated them, there's still gonna be a ratio. So if they were removed from the calculation, you're still gonna have a certain amount in the top 25 percentile, whether those calls are counted or not.
Is that good, Mr. Bita?
Thank you.
So I have Mr. Abel, Mr. Royball, Ms. Franks, Ms. Harrison, Mr. Labir, and then back to Ms. Vincent. Mr. Abel?
I have few questions, very few. I noticed there in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, that it, one of the possible sanctions is not allowing folks to rent to people under 21. Has that been removed? You didn't mention it, so.
I don't think it's been removed. That's, that could always be a possible sanction. There'll be sanctioning guidelines that are set up, and so that could be one of those that's included. A lot of hotels practice that as a best practice anyway, but yeah, it hasn't been removed or anything per se.
There are a lot of college students who need a night or two of lodging and.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yep.
The significant crime angle.
Yes.
Is there a multiplier of that, that perhaps if two or three of those things occur within six months, we might want to shut them down in advance of the hearing?
I think the, well, in advance of the hearing, it couldn't occur in advance of, but I think that the hearing officer doesn't live in a bubble. So if they're back there again, so let's say they have a murder that occurs, and then six months later, there's a prostitution ring that's found in the same apartment complex, I mean, not apartments, I'm sorry, hotel or motel, the hearing officer will know, you know, will know that. And so that's one of the benefits, is we can, we can talk about criminal episodes that are occurring in a specific amount of time. I think that points to one reason we included that, is because we said, well, they may have a number under so much, but if an act occurs that's so heinous or is directly related to the establishment, if we find out that a motel owner is running a human trafficking ring out of the basement of the motel, we gotta give them in front of a hearing officer. We're not gonna wait until their calls are too high, you know what I mean? So I think that, that speaks to that.
In a case like that, you'd probably take them to jail anyway.
We would do our best.
And the other thing is, maybe sort of a stretch, but we're soon going, going to be dealing with short-term rentals.
Yes.
And they'll be lodging.
Yes.
Do we or do we not want to include them in this? And if not, shouldn't we add language to specifically exclude them?
My understanding at this time, and I'll defer, but my understanding is those are being looked at as two completely separate issues, and I'll defer to people, I think this is beyond the scope of what I know about, and that would be a decision that's made somewhere else.
Counselor, we did not consider those and I would not recommend, recommend that just because we wouldn't even have access to know who has short-term rentals or who doesn't. We know who our hotel and motel establishments are. So yes, sir, I would recommend against that. I think that would be.
I'm not suggesting that we put it in, just that if we're not going to include them, we specifically mention that this doesn't apply to such things as short-term rental.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem at all.
That could be, this shall not apply to this, because I think, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, though, we don't even recognize short-term rentals, so.
We don't have them until we officially recognize them. It's not happening in Lakewood.
But there would be, there would be nothing to add until we allowed for them or did not allow for them officially, if that makes any sense. Mr. Royball?
Great presentation, thank you. Just a couple of clarification questions. When you talked about the numbers and when certain threshold numbers that came up, my first inclination when I looked at it was sometimes, and again, you got to look on both sides, you know? Let's say, for example, the hotel owner, there might be some issues that have come outside their scope that come into their parking lot and they have no jurisdiction over that. And it could be somewhat violent by having security, for example. They're somewhat limited unless they're law enforcement to be able to presume that forward. But my question is that we just need to keep an open dialogue, open conversation with, like what you were talking about with the owners and say, look, this might be a possibility. You know, it's like neighborhood watch, so to speak, and say, this might be a possibility, but I want to make sure not to hold them accountable for that one extra number, you know, against them. And that was the number one thought that I had. The other thing that came up and you kind of mentioned, and I think this is a great idea. I think these hotels need to know what their running log is, how many calls did they get, where are they at in the shoot? You know, for example, for each room, they already had one call for the year, each room, and all of a sudden they get another call. You send them an email or a fax or something to contact them saying, hey, guys, you know, this is what's going on. So it gives them an opportunity to say, okay, this particular call didn't apply, and they can go ahead and document that and get that ready for the hearing officer and say, hey, look, I got all my paperwork that I was sent, this one didn't apply to me, can you please, you know, take that one out? So if you give the hotels a running list of, you know, what numbers are there, you know, and that way they can keep track to see where they're at. So there's no, the open communication is there and they have no excuse saying, when they go in front of the hearing officer, they know that they're in trouble or they just say, well, no, Your Honor, this is what, this, what it is. The other thing that you talked about, and I'd like to kind of explore a little bit more about it, is obviously gathering information when things do happen there. And one of them is cameras. You know, I think that would be something positive for the establishments to actually prove, saying, hey, look, we're doing everything we can, we'd like to share, you know, the information that what did occur. So if something did occur in the parking lot, you have, you know, video to be able to kind of prove that. And that would be prudent on the businesses to say, hey, look, I'm part of the neighborhood, I want to become part of the neighborhood, I'm doing my best to do that. So maybe, my thought was, is go to, you know, go to the hotels and ask them if they'd like to have an analysis done in the complex and say, hey, look, we'd like to recommend some things for you to make things a little bit easier and see what the response is. And then if they choose to take it, they follow it, then it would really help them out. If they don't, then, you know, they're in for some hard rides.
And I think that's the key to understand about this ordinance is those resources have generally been always available. Our entire division offers crime prevention through environmental design surveys, anyone can request one and we'll do one within scope. We've done them for little businesses all the way up to Turumo, you know? And so I think to your point, absolutely. The key here is we have to make the motel owners and management interested in doing that, and the ordinance helps compel them.
Well, we hold them responsible for doing the right thing.
Exactly.
But we also give them an opportunity and encouragement to help them to do the right thing. I think that's what I'm looking for.
And I think that's the concept and that's the, that's the goal of that initial mandatory meeting, because we specifically said none of it will be required, but you have to meet with us and at least listen, hear out some ideas. And so to your point, I think that's exactly what it is, because when we meet with them, we're gonna, we're not going to look at them as just Hotel 1.257 on our radar. We're going to go, this is Hotel Alamo, they're a part of our community. What, we will ask them, what have you been seeing at your hotel? Well, I have a problem with people doing this all the time. Here's the answer. You know, so exactly, I think, I think that's built into this process and I'm glad you support that.
So if we bring them into our neighborhood like neighborhood watch, they become part of it. So if there's something going, happening outside their environment and they call, then they're being, you know, proactive and saying, okay, I don't want it coming into my particular sphere.
Yeah, and I think, I think the nice thing is if you recognize that if, good neighbors make good neighborhoods, right? So if they become a good neighbor and the business store becomes a good neighbor, eventually that neighborhood transforms too. But until everyone puts in the work, it just doesn't happen. So, thank you.
That's all I have.
Ms. Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. This may be, the first one may be a real silly question, but what are we saying is the definition of a room? So we have something, is it just a contiguous space with one bathroom? Are we saying it's multiple beds? Can a suite qualify? Just so we know that everyone's counting themselves correctly.
Sure, and I don't think we have a definition, but at least from the spirit of this, it would be the rented space. So if they have three little, and maybe you can answer this.
No, well, we do have lodging rooms. Definition.
Sure, yeah. So it just says lodging room means and includes any room, guest room or sleeping accommodation that accommodates one or more guests. So it'd be fair to say if you have a location with two bedrooms or, you know, a pull-out couch, that doesn't matter, it's just the room itself, the rental itself.
Right, no, that helps. Also, I want to understand, it sounds like the first, the recommendation is for the license to be $750 and then the renewal to be $400. Did that factor in what we anticipate to be the true overhead of the hearing officer, which I could imagine would flux and be high in the first years and then slowly progress? Did that get factored into, baked into that? Or do we need to look at giving the hearing officer the ability to impose financial sanctions for those who have, kind of need repeat visits? Because we may have to do a contracted hearing officer, I think those might be available, where then the demand is being paid for by the offenders rather than the ones who are playing by the rules, having to absorb the costs of those who aren't. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, we definitely included, we looked at, well, how many hours do we think the CAT team will put into the inspections? How many hours do we think the crime analysts will put into reviewing the calls and removing that? We definitely included that in the year after year costs. And then we got with the city clerk and said, what do you think you need from that aspect? And they're in charge of the hearing officer. Now, we could review that with them and get you a more in-depth answer, but I, we did include everyone that would be a part of this in that process to come up with that number, that initial number.
Great, thank you. I also wanted to understand if we could maybe look towards, I know there's been some concern about maybe the motel owner or the managers not wanting to report something. I don't necessarily think that's, if somebody's had a crime against them, they're, you know, even a criminal who has a crime against, tends to wants to get some relief from that. But could we look at maybe saying that the crime analyst would look at that police report and if the victims reported that they contacted the manager and they refused to, that that somehow makes, that information makes it to the hearing officer as a mitigating, as a factor to.
As an aggravating factor?
As almost an aggravating factor to that. If we start to find out that, that somebody reported and said, well, I told the manager this was happening and I finally had to call, that means that they were suppressing that call to some degree. And I guess that might mitigate some of the concerns that folks have had of maybe underreporting and us not hearing about. So that, I don't need an answer, I just wanted to throw that out, there might be a way to take care of that. The other thing, it sounds like here that we have manager change where we're going to require that the managers are registered. I would assume that'd be for the various shifts. And I'm just wanting to suggest that maybe not only registering, but we have some kind of a best practices pamphlet that we maybe provide, as well as maybe that manager is made aware of the plan that they're on, meaning that they're on a plan where there's six things that they're being asked to do because they're under, that that manager gets benefit of that, so they're aware that, well, here's the best practices, but here's the plan you're on, your probationary plan for your business. That way, they can't later claim, well, I didn't know we were supposed to be getting IDs, or I didn't know we were supposed to be getting. So I guess I would just maybe want an education component just baked in there somehow, and that's the end of the suggestions.
Yeah, and I think to add to that, one thing we did when we sent out the email post the meeting, as anyone who attended, we sent him a list of hotel motel best practices to reduce crime and disorder. And we actually first gave this list to one of our hotels that had been having ongoing problems and we've been working with corporate to address it. But that list includes things like have a minimum of two staff on site 24/7, have a motel manager on site 24/7, have a professional hiring process that includes written application, confirmation of ID, blah, da, blah, provides and requires the use of uniforms or ID to all staff that allows for easy identification by first responders, so that kind of thing. So we're saying, professionalize your business and that will help. Because if I, as a cop responding in, can figure out who the maintenance person is right away, that helps us all when we're trying to find what room someone's getting assaulted in. So exactly, so.
Mr. Labir?
Thank you, Mayor. I think pretty much everybody's asked the questions I had on my mind, but I just wanted to say that I would like to take a look at the Q and A or sort of some of that input that was provided at some point, just to sort of get a sense of what some of the businesses, who I'm sure will speak today, but just to kind of dig in a little bit more on what they, what they're interested in learning more about. The other question I had was, do we have a way of verifying the room numbers? Is there, we have that?
Oh, how many they have?
Yeah.
So, sorry, go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
So initially, we received them from our economic development department. When they're required to submit their application, they have to submit the number of rooms they have. Now, we can, just based on knowing the facilities, we can say, that sounds about right. But if we think they're overinflating their room numbers to reduce their calls for service number, we can do a walkthrough as part of that process. Conversely, we don't want them to underestimate and have a higher number because of that either. So it behooves them to provide the correct number because they're held accountable for that from then on.
Okay. I think that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
And Sergeant, you can just, if you'd like, pass that list on of.
Yeah, we can definitely pass on the list we gave out with questions and answers.
Ms. Vincent?
This is more of a comment. I think council needs to, I hope they realize that our chief is exactly correct. These, I unfortunately have been, I as a neighborhood participant have tried to work with these, many, many, many of these hotels that are on the list. They have disregarded it. We've had the mayor go out and talk to some people, we've had the business, WCCA specifically go out and try to talk to them. We even had some that were offering private security, that the business association was pitching in to help and did that so they could patrol these parking lots. We have offered, there were people who said, please put up cameras, please put up lights for these. We have, these calls for service, we aren't even talking about the neighbors who come and report to me that they're, that they won't go by some of these hotels. And it's as simple as people, men lurching out and peeing all over the place, they won't walk by, they have to call for these. These are not easy things that these people are dealing with. We've had murders at some of these top hotels, we've had rapes, we have had, we have had sex trafficking I know about. So it's not that these people have not been worked with. I mean, from businesses to mayor to the police, all of us have been at many of these places and have tried to work with them on the crime-free housing is what I'm calling it, the hotel, since 2008. So while I appreciate people's concerns about the hotel may not call, I can guarantee you without a doubt, these that are at least at the top 10%, I know don't call. The people have to call, the neighbors have to call. Cars are dumped there, I've seen cars there for over a week and I know that the people aren't in the hotel. So I can testify to that. So if you think it's just a matter that these are light and not serious calls, they're very serious, and business associations and multiple, multiple people and as well as neighborhoods have tried to work with them. So I'm offering that to all of you, because I do have the misfortune, I guess, of living like two blocks from probably five of the top 10%. So thank you.
Mr. Skilling?
And I can appreciate that, and I appreciated the chief's comments on that too, that these, they're not calling anyway. So, I mean, that's, I think that's the counter to when we're talking about that chilling effect earlier. And I'm wondering if, my last comment was, I think as this discussion moves on, I'm past deciding whether or not we need it. I mean, obviously, I mean, now I'm kind of into the weeds and I really want to know about this hearing officer stuff, because the more we've talked about it, that seems to be what the big thing is going to be. Because what we've talked about tonight is you're going to have an ongoing interaction, that there's going to be these probationary periods, you're going to need experts such as yourself and these folks sitting here that are going to have to make these recommendations. There's going to have to be follow-up, what worked, what didn't work. There's a lot that goes into this authority and it's, it just can't be a clerk and a hearing officer. It seems to me it's got to be a lot more robust than that. With a lot of tools at your disposal, if you really want to make it happen, you need more than just, here's your marching orders, see you in six months. I mean, it sounds like we need, that that's the part that really needs to be developed a lot more is what that authority is going to look like. And to the point that we've been discussing about the chilling effect of reporting, maybe that goes in, we've talked about mitigating and aggravating factors, maybe that's a mitigating factor. If somebody comes in and says, well, I've been calling, I saw stolen vehicles, our hotel called that in, that could be something that they present to this authority in mitigation so that they don't get hit so hard with something. So that would be my comment.
Mr. Labir?
Yeah, I just want to second what Counselor Vincent said, especially being from Ward Two, and I know we're a little overly represented in this top 10, so I just wanted to second that. I appreciate those comments.
I can certainly put a third on that. I did go to two of our, the top of that list over two years ago and left business cards multiple times to try to speak with ownership, because I think the goal has been since 2005, please become a partner. It's 2018, so you're going to become a partner. You do have a success story, and I think without saying, or can't, am I allowed, there's one on Sixth and Wad's that has been a voluntary and actually participated in our accreditation process. And how long, when did they come on board?
They really, it was in the last few years. I was up there, so I got promoted and I'm just using personal history, in 2015, it was right before that. But that's, that's an example of a success story, because they've seen that having the relationship and having the calls for service with us has helped. They are not in the top 40. Another one that I would point to as a success story is, one thing I think, when you were asking what are some of the concerns that were brought forth, in our public meeting, someone said, this isn't fair based on region. So there's a region in the city that has a harder time than other regions and it's not fair that you're, that we're being penalized because of where our location is. The answer to that is we have one of our motels that has been a long-term voluntary member of our Crime Free Hotel Motel. They're in that region along Colfax, east of Wadsworth. They have a national night out party every year, we go out there, they have good management practices and they are just inside the top 50%. And they're, they're two away from being below even the top 50. So if we want to say, management practices can work, and no matter where you are, under what conditions you're in, working with the police and being a community partner can make you successful. And I think that's huge to think about too, because I understood that was a concern, but I'm like, just go visit them, so.
It's a partnership and you emphasize that over and over. So there was one big ask and that was what that number was, and the recommendation was 40%. And is that amenable to move forward with that 40%? And of course, this is just to continue the conversation, I think I heard the other issue was to get a little bit more information about the authority. So I may need to get better clarity, because I think it does outline, but you want to get a better understanding of what the cost related to, to would be. So on the 40% threshold, is there consensus on that? So we have consensus there as a starting point. Okay. Ms. Harrison?
I just wanted to add, one of my concerns as we were talking about the authority is it sounded like we may need to start out with maybe only one hearing officer, but as time goes along, we may actually need to have a two-level hearing procedure, one where just for the simple stuff, one person could hear, but then as it gets more serious, we may need to have, you know, a couple more people involved in that decision-making, just as a way to make it fair for people, so.
Mr. Abel?
I just wanted to note that with the 40%.
I just wanted to note that with, the 40% is fine with me, as long as we have that significant crime back up in there. Because there are some places that have a number of significant crimes, but are not in the top 40. So, and a really good presentation. Y'all do a wonderful job for it.
And so that would be part of it, because that is the recommendation, is that significant crime component. Mr. Laber?
The other thing I would add is just that, even though I know, we probably don't want to do look backs for every single thing we do up here, but it's probably a good idea to take another look at this program a year from now, or something like that, just to see how successful we've been, or if we've been successful, or et cetera.
So, we have consensus to move this forward. We have consensus with the 40. There's been some questioning about just a better understanding about the authority and what that looks like. Is that then something that you can, you can dig into more and get some more information as you move towards a final ordinance?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I got a yes from Jenna. That's all I thought I needed.
Mr. Abel?
Just one more thing. The change of ownership, how, does that wipe the slate clean, or do you still have the, the record?
They still have to meet the application requirements, and we have some standards in there. But to your point, yes, it would be difficult to, if you changed ownership, to hold a new owner accountable for a previous owner's actions. So.
So if someone is in shameful violation, and right before they go to the hearing officer, they could sell their interest in the property, and there's a clean slate there. So.
I don't know that the call for service number would change, though. So if it's still, if it's still in operation, they still have that call for service number. So they may then be able to say, "Well, I get my mandatory initial meeting, but sure, but you're still over the limit." So, there's some, there's history that follows.
So you're saying that history would carry, so if I was in violation, and I knew that this, I was going to be shut down, Charlie was my brother, and I sold it to Charlie?
Yeah, let me check, Jenna. So what, what they're asking is if there's a, if there's a change in ownership. So if, if Frank owns the place, and he's about to be shut down by the licensing authority, and he shows it, sells it to his brother Bill, what's the, where, where does the history of the, of the place go into process with the license?
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, um...
You grab the mic.
Sorry. Oh, thank you. I'm Jenna, with the City Attorney's Office, Jenneroth. Anything else?
Um, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I haven't been in front of you very often. So, so my understanding is, if someone wants to sell the facility, and is it because, and because they're in trouble? So the license is not, they can't transfer the license. So it would be a new application for whoever it is that's trying to buy the, the facility. And in the application, we want everyone to list who it is that's responsible for the business that's purchasing. So the idea is having the individuals listed so that we know who they are. And one of the questions is, have you ever had a license revoked, suspended, or denied before, from Lakewood or another jurisdiction? So I guess, you know, someone could have a license denied and then reapply, but it's never going to be transferred to someone else. It's, it's not able to transfer. So it's always going to be a new application. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The new application doesn't represent a change in behavior, perhaps?
Right.
So, the new owner gets a clean slate.
The new owner, well, I guess we didn't discuss what would happen with the call for service numbers.
And that's why I say, and I think that's something we're going to have to look at, is if, if it's not completely shut down, and, you know, closed, if it's just a change in ownership and everything else remains the same, that's something we have to look at legally, and we're going to have to discuss as a group.
And if it is completely shut down, and you transfer ownership to someone else, do they get to reopen it on reapplication?
If it's completely shut down, then a new applic, a new application has to be filed. So it's, nothing can be transferred. So I guess the question's going to be, when we review the new application, do we consider how the business has been run in the past? That's what we need to decide.
Yeah, and that's something we initially played with, and we're just going to get a better answer for you.
We didn't, what we didn't want is, is the ability for some of the businesses that are in trouble to be able to just transfer it to a different person to avoid dealing with the problems. So that's why we made sure it couldn't just automatically be transferred to someone else.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Bida?
Well, and I think that, more importantly, what you want to make sure that you do is if, let's say you've got to a point where you're going to revoke a license, now you come in, a new owner purchases the physical property, the facilities, but what you're going to want to be sure that you do is keep, make sure that the previous owner is totally divested from any ownership, either, either in the way of a financing agreement, or minority shareholder, or anything like that. Because otherwise, you really haven't accomplished anything. And I think that's, that's the kind of thing I would be concerned about, is, is, it looks like you got a new owner and a new manager, but lurking behind there, the, the old owner is still involved in some way financially, has a financial interest in some way in that business. That's what you want to avoid, I think.
Yeah, and I, what I've kind of compared this to, as I've been working on it, is our liquor licensing. And I handle our liquor licensing, and we do have that happen from time to time, where we, a bar is in trouble and close to shutting down cells, and it ends up being run by the same person who was supposed to be out of it. So that is something we're aware of, and we want to make sure is not an option for them to do.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Well done. Very well done. And we'll send it back and see when it comes back. Okay. Is there any other clarifications? I mean, I think really the time, the timeframe, you know, is when we can get these things, you know, dealt with and then brought back in a more complete ordinance that can go to first reading? Or if you think you can go to first reading once these changes are made?
Yeah, so we will look into the additional information that you asked for, one being the role and the responsibility, responsibilities of the authority, and then also as it relates to this, this new owner concept, and what those ramifications are, and how we can protect, protect the city's interests here. So I think we, we will huddle and figure out how to respond accordingly. And I think maybe we'll provide written information for you, and then wait to hear what that feedback might be. So if we need to have another conversation, or if we can integrate it into the first reading, we'll just wait and, just give us some time to work it through, work these answers, and give it to you, and then kind of see how that falls. We really want to get this right the first time. And it sounds as if, or it looks as if most of you are interested in us doing a look back a year after it's adopted. So is that something we ought to fold in as well? Okay. After it's adopted, though. So once we have all the, yeah, worked out. Good? Thank you.
Ms. Vincent?
Yeah, um, it's just, I, we are okay, because there's a lot of businesses and neighborhood groups, et cetera, that are interested in this. And we're okay to talk to them about where we are at this point, or, okay, that's, that's what I assumed, but I've assumed things before. So, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'll open up the public input portion, and we've had some folks sign up. If you didn't have a chance, once we go through the list, if you'd like to speak, I'll invite you down. You have three minutes. Is this working now? Okay. So this little box here will be green for two and a half. It's black box there. And then when you have 30 seconds left, it will go yellow, and when your time is up, it'll go red, and I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. So first up, I have Albert Arellano. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Council. My name is Albert Arellano, A-R-E-L-L-A-N-O. I'm the owner of the Lakewood Lodge Motel. You'll see us on that list up there. And since 2008, we've been complying with the police department, and we've implemented all of the recommendations they've given to us. And the majority officers that come to us say that we're doing an excellent job. So we believe them, and we kept on with all our practices that we've done before. Now I am concerned that me as an owner and the management that I have running the business are going to be skeptical about calling if there's a problem. Now, I am, I am, I am kind of glad that you're talking about not holding that against us, which I appreciate, because we've been diligent about calling. Most of our calls are for people that refuse to leave the rooms. Why? You haven't paid your rent? You're supposed to be out at 10 o'clock. Why aren't you out? We have no choice but to call the police. Because they, and some of them get physical. They want to, they want to fight with you. Or they yell and scream obscenities, and I have female operator workers that should not hear that. I've told them, at 10 o'clock at night, do not go out. If there's a problem, call the police right away. And if they have a problem in the rooms, please call the police. And we've been calling. The numbers we have is 82. The manager tells me he's been calling probably all those numbers. And so, and we haven't had any significant criminal activity in our place. We had one death by overdose. That's it. And that wasn't, that wasn't by our fault. We tried to help him. He was a parolee. One question I had was, if a parole officer comes to visit a parolee, am I held against that? Sometimes they come five or 10 into the rooms, looking for these guys. The other day, my manager told me that there was eight officers. They took out two people out of the rooms. Is that going to be counted against us? Hopefully not. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll try to capture some of these questions to make sure that they're included. Ms. Miller? Good evening. Welcome.
I'm Brianna Miller. I'm the general manager at the Sheraton Denver West Hotel, located at 360 Union Boulevard. Thank you, first of all, for your concern about safety. We certainly share that concern. We definitely understand, you know, where this is coming from. We are happy to not be one of the poor performers. So maybe a little bit different perspective that we're speaking from. I think that a majority of my points were actually already talked about, and I don't want to be redundant. I do share concern about discouraging hotel owners or operators from calling the police. And I think more so if owners and management are suggesting to their team members, their employees, to not call the police when they feel like it's necessary, putting them in unnecessary danger. I also share the concern that we have a lot of calls that, you know, have to do with things like evictions. These are not any sort of violent criminal activities, but they are things that we, we feel sometimes put our employees in danger, or maybe particularly, we just really don't have control over. We have to call and get help for, and we don't want to be penalized for those types of things. I think there just needs to be really good consideration given to, kind of qualifying those calls. It sounds a little bit complicated and maybe even subjective. What is going to determine a call that counts against a hotel versus one that is maybe, you know, an approved call? So I think really trying to narrow down, what does that mean? Because right now, it feels like a gray area, and it feels subjective, and like we won't really understand what is, you know, something that would be considered a call against us or a point against us. And then for our hotel personally, because again, we're not necessarily, you know, anywhere near the threshold that you guys are talking about, is the language about a significant criminal act has occurred on the lodging facility's premises. The fact that just one criminal act could put us in, in front of the authority, and again, a little bit gray on what that, what that is. So I would be interested in that as well. But that's of particularly concern for us, is just that one, something that could be one event. And that's outside of the call per room ratio. Really, that's all that I have. Thank you guys again for including us in this process and the, you know, the first public hearing and/or public discussion. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So Mr. Sue, 6218 West Colfax? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Young Sal. My parents own a motel on West Colfax. It's Big Bunny Motel. And my parents have been operating and owned that motel for about 20, 25 years. So they devoted, you know, one-third of their lives in the motel. And thank you very much, Officer, today. I think the presentation was great. But one thing that I don't agree with what he's saying is that, I guess, all of the council and then two people before me had a same opinion that by imposing a restricting the call 911 is just way of not preventing the criminal activity, but somehow it's encouraging. Because if I'm the owner of the motel, and I'm like about to hit my limit line, then even though, unless the people are killing, or unless like really, really violent activities going on, I'm not going to call, because my business is in the line. So my take on it is that, is there any way to work with, you know, this hotel owner and policeman or the police department, rather than just restricting the 911 call? Is there anything else? Because just by restricting 911 call is not going to help the, you know, the problem. Because like I said, the people, the business owner are in danger, especially my names, our names are in top two. We're not going to make any call. Period. Even though there is a criminal activity. So my suggestion, my, you know, take on it is that, please, please reconsider this to, let's talk about, I mean, we are open to discussion. So let's talk about other ways to prevent criminal activities in motels or hotels, other than just restricting 911 calls. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So with the last two comments, so I would say, just we'll continue to have outreach. And Mr. Sal, I, I think there is a lot more than just calling 911. And we'll get that, you know, we'll make sure we get more information, but it truly is a partnership. And our agents are going to be able to go out and sit down with you and your family, and talk to you about ways that don't mean you have to call 911, and try to help you achieve a safer and more productive business. So that's really the goal. Okay? All right. Thank you. All right. So that is it on lodging license. Thank you again. And last, but certainly not least, we have item number five, which is proposed amendments to the campaign finance ordinance. I'm going to turn this over now to our campaign finance committee chair, Councilor Abel, and our legal advisor, Mr. Gruuskin, who are going to talk a little bit about this and help us get through this complicated subject.
Well, don't expect me to be as slick as Sergeant Ailish. I found out at 1:00 this afternoon, I was the presenter. This is my slideshow, and I saw it for the second time at 6:30. So, that said, in response to some concerns raised after the last local election, we formed a ad hoc committee. I am the chair, Jacob... committee. I am the chair. Jacob LeVure, Mike Bita, David Skilling and Dana Gutwine participated. And most of our consensus, the issues on which we reached consensus, the consensus was unanimous. There were two or three that were four to one. I was the one in most of those instances. But this all arose in March of 2012 when the Colorado Ethics Watch brought an appeal of a decision involving Colorado Springs in their campaign finance law. The appellate court decided that if a municipality, a home rural municipality has addressed any part of the campaign finance law, then they bought the whole thing. We at the time had, in February of 2013, I'm sorry, in June of 2008, that's the wrong one too, my notes are, oh, there we go. We had regulated write-in candidate votes and instituted a provision for the cancellation of elections. So because we did that, the entire campaign finance picture was left up to the city. In February of 2013, we formed this ad hoc committee to look at the four-year-old campaign finance ordinance that had presented some concerns. And we also had, on the heels of forming the ad hoc committee, we had a U.S. District Court ruling saying that it is not the purview of private citizens to bring complaints and prosecute them. It is the purview of the municipal entity. So as we were working through this, we saw that we now had to develop a new hearing process and campaign finance reporting, violation reporting process. The ruling doesn't mean that citizens cannot point out possible violations. So our process addresses that as well as how to handle the hearings themselves and it leaves the community member out of the prosecution of it and out of the, out of writing checks for lawyers to defend themselves. We have an initiative where that's happening now. So we, the first thing we did, the best thing we did, was to retain the services of Mark Gruuskin. One of the, if, if you want to know about election law in Colorado, call Mr. Gruuskin. He has the answers. We told him what our goals were, which was to impose lower donor limits for contributions to candidates, establish disclaimer requirements for electioneering materials, implement the enforcement process that complies with the federal court ruling, enhance transparency, know who is donating to whom and how much, limit the influence of corporations and donations from unidentifiable sources. Corporations because you don't know who in this vast corporation has donated the, or made the contribution or authorized it. And to tighten the deadlines for filing reports, require more frequent filings and as we approach the election. One of the major things we have done is to reduce the contribution limits for candidates to $400 for council candidates and $800 for the mayor. At present, I believe if you're running for governor, you're limited to $600. If you're running for mayor of Lakewood, you're limited to $5,000 per contribution. So we thought that to be a bit out of whack. We want to attribute proportional contributions from LLCs, limited liability corporations. That is in large part where local donations come from and through a business conduit. At one time, we had one fellow who had four or five LLCs, all of them that did nothing but make political contributions. And they were, these aren't the exact names of them, but 5516 LLC, 4913 LLC and 3012 LLC. No way you knew who that person was. And by doing so, they could put four, four maximum donations to work out of their own pocket. So transparency became a big factor. The committee has met nine times and have come up with a document I believe is very worthy. And Mr. Gruuskin took our suggestions and made them comply with the law. And he, I think even enhanced some of them to a degree that we hadn't even considered. So, but very significant changes. We, our next steps are this study session, first reading will be on December 10, 2018 and second reading on January 14, 2019. We also have done such things as added, put disclaimers back into the code that, so if a, you know where an ad or electioneering piece of material is coming from, if it's coming from an independent expenditure committee that has no connection with the candidate, that's going to be clearly noted. If the candidate or the candidates committee provides it, then that will be clearly noted. Those are the highlights and we've had this before us for our reading pleasure for weeks now. And I think what we have, where we are now is to answer the questions that council may have. I'm going to rely on Mr. Gruuskin to do that for the large part. And I will duck whatever questions I can. I'll answer those that I have to. So, Mayor, I think we can open it up for our council discussion.
Great.
Questions?
Well, well done. I want to thank the committee for all your work and thank council for having the opportunity to have a study session. This is an important piece of legislation and I've gone through it once before. So this will be the second time. So I know it's important to try to get it as, as good as we can right now. And it probably won't be perfect. Nothing is, but this is the first step of that opportunity. Ms. Vincent?
I had one question. Section A, 2.54.040 on the second part, page 21, which is on ours. It says that you, you have to file reports on the 270th, 180th, 90th, 60th, on down. My question is, is, I know there's a cutoff time for where, when you can submit that you can run for council, but I think that's after 270 or 180. Is there a provision in here that says you can't, you can only file a report if you've already submitted a candidate? I mean, if, if I'm a candidate and I file after the 270th day that I'm supposed to report, I can't report.
I don't believe you have to do, meet any of those deadlines until you are an actual candidate.
Okay.
And you would pick up where we are.
Well, and that does make sense. I just didn't see where that was pointed out in here.
Mr. Gruuskin, does it need to be?
I mean, it makes sense. You can't, you can't file a report.
And that's a good point.
I think the, as is often the case, the answer to your question is in definitions rather than in substantive provisions. Until a person becomes a candidate and forms a candidate committee, there's no reporting responsibility. At the point at which you file your papers and, and then register as a, as a candidate committee, your reporting obligation, whether it's before the 270th day or if it's on the 100th day, at that point, it clicks in. So I think not directly, but effectively, and that's exactly the, the way the state law works as well.
Okay. So you, whenever you filed, you'd fall into that next one. If I filed on day 100, I'd have to report on day 90?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, Counselor Abel.
That's charitable. Thank you.
And thanks to the committee for doing all this. This is painful and it takes a lot of time. So thank you so much. My question is, and I had asked you this a little bit earlier, Mr. Gruuskin, in the definition of corporation that's defined in here, there's a lot of sub S corporations. Would you clarify how sub Ss fall into this and how they would be required to report?
The ordinance doesn't change the existing definition of corporation for purposes of the campaign finance ordinance and treats as a corporation, any entity that is incorporated under the state corporate act. So if an entity does fall within that, that provision, it will, it will be treated for purposes of prohibitions on direct contributions to candidates as a corporation. Obviously, an S corp will be taxed as a partnership, even though it has a corporate capacity. But under your existing ordinance and under the ordinance going forward, an S corp, as I understand it, would qualify as a corporation under state law and therefore be subject to the prohibition on corporate contributions.
Okay. And then just any other business entity then would also, so for example, a partnership would also be excluded, correct?
Partnerships are excluded from the definition of corporation. And to the extent that a limited liability company forms, those members will only be able to contribute up to their individual maximum amount.
So because a partnership actually has the names of two different people or however many, and you can tie the contribution to that specific person, not the vague name of a corporation, that's why it's, why it's acceptable then?
There's a long history of how corporations are treated under campaign finance laws stemming back to the Teddy Roosevelt days, when corporations and labor unions were both prohibited from political activity. Partnerships and, and other entities hadn't really emerged as political forces at that point. And yes, partnerships have a different treatment, although you could, if you wanted to incorporate within this provision, a like treatment to, to limited liability companies such that partners could only give up to their individual amount based upon their partnership's share.
I think as long as we make it clear and, and fair for all business entities, I have no problems with it. I get the goal and I'm not opposed to the goal. I just, I didn't understand the difference on, on sub S. So, sounds good. Thank you.
And if I may, if you're a member of an LLC, your responsibility for the donation is in direct proportion to your holdings as a member of the LLC, how much of the LLC you own. And you cannot make a $400 donation to a council person as a member of an LLC and then turn around and do it as a private person. It's still going to go with your name. So even if we, if it's two partners, both partners contribute, contribute the maximum a piece, but then no more. So it, it all evens out that way.
Mr. LeBir?
All right. Thank you for your presentation, Councilman Abel. I just, based on some public comment I've received, I had a few sort of questions and thoughts about possible amendments to add for second reading. One of the comments I received was pertaining to whether it's wise to call our sort of disclosure requirement on envelopes or yard signs, things like that, whether it's wise to call that a disclaimer or not, just based on sort of the definition of, of a disclaimer. Is that a typical, just standard campaign finance practice to call it that or?
It's, it's a, it's a term that's used under the federal election law, under state election law. There is legislation that's going to be proposed in the upcoming Colorado General Assembly that will expand disclaimer coverage and will use that as a term. But right now, the term disclaimer is used both in state statute and in the Secretary of State's regulations. So I think it's within the, that world understood.
Okay. Great. And then another comment was, under our definition of electioneering communication, we don't really have anything specifically pertaining to internet communications. I was wondering if that's maybe wise to add that part of the definition?
The, the electioneering communication definition, you're correct, doesn't refer to any sort of internet or social media or other electronic communications. It does have an all encompassing phrase or otherwise distributed. But I don't know that the, I don't, certainly the, in my experience, the, the more clarity and the more specificity typically equates with a greater opportunity for compliance and understanding, which is really what you want to generate. So I would think that including a reference such as the one that you're, you're making, I think would be beneficial.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. Would you mind speaking to the reason why the banning of corporate donations was focused more towards campaign candidate committees and as opposed to independent expenditures or, or other types of political committees?
The root of campaign finance regulation is about prohibiting either the appearance or the actuality of corruption of, of public officials. The notion that certain entities are more inclined to act in a way that would lead to corruption of public officials is really limited to candidate committees because there's no way, the United States Supreme Court has litigated or has addressed this several times. There's really no way to corrupt a ballot issue, for instance. And likewise, as to political committees or independent expenditure committees, if those entities are in fact operating independent of candidates, there's no corruption influence. And therefore, without that influence or the potential for that influence, you run into First Amendment issues when you start to restrict either sources or amounts of contributions. And the footnote to that pretty boring conversation is Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission. So basically, the United States Supreme Court has said, hands off.
Thank you for that. And I think my last question is, and we had a pretty robust conversation about fish bowls. Was I right in our, or remind me, is that something we could do is just flat out stopping cash donations altogether? Is that an option?
As a matter of constitutional law, it absolutely is. If it's the judgment of the council that there ought not be- If it's the judgment of the council that there ought not be cash contributions, you absolutely have that prerogative.
If I may again, we had a very good discussion, didn't really come to a consensus on anything, but as a footnote to the ordinance, we have a couple of possible additions. One of them says that, where do I have it? "No committee may, candidate committee may accept any contribution in currency or coin of more than $20 from any contributor or fail to report contributors of currency of coin of more than $20." That's how we try to eliminate what we call the FISBO contribution, where you set out a FISBO at one of your campaign events and people come up and put in less than $20 or less. Sometimes they'll put in $20 or less five or six times until, Mr. Bida and I have never had that experience. So it's, it's kind of hard for us to imagine you'd walk away from a campaign event with two grand in $20 bills, but I guess it could be done. So we have that as a possibility to add to the ordinance if council so wishes.
Thank you. And the last thing is just a comment, really. I just thank everyone for the, who was on the committee, did a lot of great work. I enjoyed this committee as much as anyone can enjoy any committee. And, and I think the work is not done, but I think we did a, I think we did a lot of good stuff here. And I think, I think that'll hopefully reflect in the next election, but you know, time will tell. So, thanks.
We have a few months left on our ad hoc committee allowed time of the year. And one of the things that Mr. Labir and Ms. Gutwien both wanted to pursue was possible public component, a public finance component of campaigns. And hopefully, we will get to that in the next couple of months.
So I have a few questions. And it looks like we may have some amendments, so when we proceed to adopt, will you be present with, within that realm, or?
At second reading on the 14th of January, yes. I'd have to be present.
And I guess one's a clarification, because we are adopting, Mr. Cox, you had mentioned there'd be perceived or some sort of language that'll state any, because it won't be adopted and go into a loath till a certain amount of time, but it'll have some sort of disclaimer that anybody participating in the 2019 election will be, and beyond, will be subjected to these rules.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gruskin and I had not had an opportunity to talk about that, but I'd certainly want to get his, his input. It has to go with the effective date of the ordinance and what happens with candidates who've already been adopted, whether this can be applied to them after the fact.
I have, at the committee's direction, Mr. Mayor, kind of wrestled with how, particularly given the fact that you will be so close to your municipal election, how to address that. I came up with one proposal that was imperfect, but would think that maybe in the next week or couple of weeks, I can discuss it with Mr. Cox and we can come up with a, maybe a more poetic way of making sure that there is fairness among candidates who have collected funds prior to and after this particular ordinance would go into effect. So I'm...
There is a proposed amendment. Was that drafted by, in our packet? There's a proposed amendment?
That was mine, my less than poetic version.
Yeah.
Called the catch-up provision.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll have to see where that goes. I mean, I, I don't quite, I mean, a campaign is a campaign and to arbitrarily throw in a catch-up provision on potentially folks that have been raising money and saying, well, the rules changed, so we're going to limit you or handicap you, I don't think that is, is fair. And that might just be a personal opinion, so, but I'd be willing to question that legally. And I guess my second question would be the, the banning of labor unions being able to give donations to a, an individual campaign. So that clearly passes a legal test?
That has been upheld, equal treatment of corporations has been upheld, both at the United States Supreme Court and the Colorado Supreme Court.
That's fair. And what was the, what was the, I guess, behind limiting contributions from labor unions?
Because you don't know who the members are that are kicking in the money. For instance, I was in the Newspaper Guild and the Newspaper Guild wanted to collect money for candidates. It became a very contentious issue among the union members themselves as, well, I don't want that candidate, I don't want that candidate. So we don't know who those people are who are directing the money toward the candidate, or for what reason. Also, and along with the definition of corporation, state also bans corporate, corporate donations, where we have been allowing them. So that was, that was the thought of a couple of the council, of the committee members, that labor unions be held to the same standard.
If I could just add that even though corporations can't use corporate funds and labor unions can't use general treasury funds for purposes of donations, both entities can form a political committee or a small donor committee, and therefore their employees or their union members can still give in a concerted way for purposes of municipal campaigns. It's just not out of the, their general treasuries.
And in the case of those two entities, we have a provision that the donors be identified. Small donor committees, 501(c)(3)'s, I believe, and...
If, if, there's certain limitations on identifying, for instance, members of an association, and that goes back into First Amendment law. But the, the, at the point at which you are giving more than $20 during a reporting period, your name will appear on a report. For a small donor committee, in, at the state level, it's $50 capped. For purposes of this ordinance, in order to promote that kind of activity, it's $100 per election cycle. And if people are giving, say, $5 every reporting period, you won't see their names. Their, their names will, their amounts will simply be in an unitemized contribution total. But if they're giving $50 in a reporting period, you will see their name. So if they are just gradual givers, small givers, because obviously, in a labor union, for instance, if you have a lot of people giving $5 in a reporting period, those reporting obligations become unduly burdensome.
So if I was donating from an LLC and I had an LLC that employed 100 people, it's just like a corporation. You don't know that...
It's not the employees, it's the members of the LLC. People who get together to form the limited liability corporation, their employees are their employees.
Sure, but that money comes from the LLC, which could be produced by the employees of the LLC. I'm just saying, there's not, if you're looking at a corporation or LLC or a labor union, and the idea would be to disclose who's donating, you don't get that with an LLC. You get a member.
I'm sorry.
You get a member.
You get a member and the proportionate amount of their ownership of the LLC determines how much of that donation they're responsible for. And they can, they can donate up to the limit, but then they cannot donate more personally.
I, I understand.
And in our current, our current ordinance, it requires identification of members of an LLC who contribute more than $100, Mr. Gruskin, or 500? In our current ordinance, members of LLCs have to be identified if they kick in more than 100, I think.
It's all right. I don't need to get hung up on it. I'm just...
We, we already have that, that identifying requirement for LLCs, it's just hones it and makes it...
I certainly understand. I think my point was missed as to being able to have the transparency of who's donating the money. So, go ahead.
I just, you're correct, there's kind of a yin and yang of reporting. And I think the committee struggled with how far to push. But I think the, the notion of ensuring that there is more frequent reporting will certainly disclose what entities are politically active. And there's also, particularly for independent expenditure committees, a heightened level of disclosure to, so that, so that groups that have neighbors for a better neighborhood, but you don't really know what their interests are, you're, you're going to know more about kind of their lobbying presence and their, their policy interests so that that too is disclosed. But, but you're 100% right, Mayor. There's not, you, you could, let me put it this way. You could adopt an ordinance that requires every single penny in every reporting period to be disclosed. And that's an option. I think the committee was trying to be careful not to be too burdensome on reporting agents.
And not to say that I, I agree or disagree. I'm just, you know, I mean...
It's a totally valid approach.
I guess for me, what I worry about, and it's the same thing I worried about when we did this a few years ago, you know, in some ways, when you put more restrictions in different areas, you just push the money into dark. It just becomes dark money and more ambiguities, less transparency. Hopefully, this won't happen. And could you speak to me a little bit, because you did bolster the electioneering? Is that, so did you do that just through definition of electioneering, or did you add more?
The provisions related to electioneering communications and independent expenditures were both beefed up, in part through disclaimer requirements, including requirements, putting the failure to disclaim communications under the Campaign Finance Complaint Process. And for those entities that don't put any sort of disclaimer at all and just try and stay under the radar, authorizing the city clerk to hire appropriate investigators to determine who sent it out and in the Campaign Finance Complaint Process, recouping those costs from entities that are trying to avoid the disclaim, disclaiming process. As to electioneering communications, we tried to clear up some pieces of your existing ordinance. There was a lowering of the dollar amount so that there will be, that...
Right.
That will trigger reporting, so that there will be more reporting. There was clarity that 501(c)(4) organizations couldn't form to conceal the source of their donors, but they too are required if they're going to engage in electioneering communications. And such entities are going to have to disclose their professional lobbyists at the state level and any lobbyists that they hire here at the city level, so that when that disclosure is had, the citizens of Lakewood can know what interests are being advanced from a policy point of view for the purpose of your election process.
Right. So is that all encompassing when you said, and I'll get lost in translation on the 504? Is that, are there others that need to be included, or that pretty much is in what we've seen in the city of Lakewood? That's where entities will create under that to have, to remain under the radar?
I don't know the specific Lakewood experience, but the 501(c)(4) organization is the social welfare organization that is most often politically used to conceal donors.
Okay.
501(c)(6)'s, which are business associations, 501(c)(3)'s can't engage in partisan politics or electoral politics. So I think as a significant first effort, you will be mandating more disclosure than a lot of your counterpart municipalities. And I will tell you, the very first thing the committee asked me to do was to get a model Campaign Finance Ordinance from someone else in Colorado. And in talking to other city attorneys and the municipal league, I was told, you're about to write it.
There we go. We'll take that. Okay, let me see. So the last, I guess, kind of area that I want to go into is the ease of reporting and the availability of forms. I mean, where we've struggled in the past is we have kind of an antiquated system, no offense, Madam Clerk. So I want to make sure that we're ready as an organization to take this on, to make sure that people, there's no barrier to being able to run, to file, you know, no matter what area you want to be in and to have access to that. And do you feel, are we going to be prepared to have this? And is it going to be pretty user-friendly, I hope?
Yes, we've had some discussions with IT already about looking at those forms again. Right now, it's an Excel spreadsheet, which seems to be working okay. I know it's not ideal. We have had those conversations with IT to see if there's something out there better or a different way to do it. But yeah, we are prepared to move forward with whatever you decide.
One of the reasons also that we've instituted more frequent reporting and more reports is because the old ordinance was designed for a polling place election on, on the first Tuesday in November. So we have now tried to institute a reporting system that will cover the mailing period from mid-October into Election Day. One of the other things I neglected to mention is that when we lowered the campaign contribution limits or proposed to lower them to 800 and 400, we're also eliminating a provision called the extraordinary donation, which now requires you, if you get a donation over a certain amount within 30 days of the election, you have to report it within 24 hours. And that's pretty onerous.
So for clarification, that's a good point. So that was the $1,000?
Right. So this, by lowering these donate, we no longer have an extraordinary donation that you have to report. So that, that 24-hour period is gone. That simplifies things. Also...
Don't look at me.
Miss, you're the guy that gets 5,000 bucks of whack.
Hey!
And lots of them. Another thing that we, we're looking at is the ability of the public to see more frequent reports, so they'll know, they'll have a better idea of who's donating what and when. And it doesn't run over until the end of November after the election, when the really big bucks that were donated come into that final report.
Can you just help me understand, just because it popped out to me, the media outlet, political records provision? Just A?
I'm sorry, under, under which provision are you...
2.54.080.
That's in your existing ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea why it was originally put in there. My guess is that it is, that what it does is it attempts to incorporate the requirement that, say, a radio or TV station that has, where a candidate has placed a buy, that that is an open record that other individuals can go review so that they can get a sense, including the media, and especially the media here. But those, those records are public records under federal law as a matter of FCC requirement. So this is a nice duplication, but it doesn't, doesn't really create any new requirement.
Okay. And then last year, because this is, this is brand new to the... And then last year, because this is, this is brand new to the city and was kind of beyond the scope, but I think it's a good deal, is the limited ability that we're going to start doing with lobbyist registration. And is that kind of uniform to what we're adopting at the municipal level, uniform to what the state disclosures are? No?
Nope.
Okay.
You are, you are ahead of the curve if, and, and that may not be something that you want, you want to mandate, but part of the issue that the committee raised was these groups spring up and no one really knows, even when they're reporting, what interests are being advanced, particularly if they're out of state givers. And so the one way of trying to address that was to put that front and center as part of your reporting process.
As far as lobbyists go?
Yeah, just, just indicating whether or not lobbyists are retained and, and what their, what their interests are in front of the city.
So then we'll have a separate page that'll be dedicated to that platform with registered lobbyists, I'm assuming? Is that how?
This is not a, this does not impose a registration requirement on what goes on at the state. It simply requires that if you are doing, if you are one of these independent groups, you disclose that you have lobbyists that have particular interests in front of the city or the state. So that the nature of the entity is disclosed.
Okay. So I thought there was another additional that even registering as a lobbyist to the city, not having to do with contributions.
The committee did discuss that. It was deemed to be somewhat beyond its mission.
Okay. Thank you. We're good. All right.
I'd also like to point out, when you speak of the difficulty of the forums and such, folks won't have to memorize this. Margie, every election cycle puts together what you really need to know about election, uh, campaign finance in a few short pages. And that still, that clarification will go out the same way, so.
No, it's good. As easy as we can make it, the best it will be. Mr. LeBaron.
We certainly didn't want to discourage anyone from running for office. We do want to encourage more reporting and such by IECs and PACs so that we know who they are and where they're coming from. But I think it will be, there will be no impediments to anyone wanting to run for office.
Mr. LeBaron?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I know I alluded to this earlier, but just based on sort of that lobby conversation and the public finance element, and I think just reading through the ordinance, it's pretty obvious, there's probably plenty of room for cleanup. I can imagine, even though the clerk and recorders would probably hate us, but I could imagine seeing a need for potentially continuing the conversation for probably longer than anticipated for two months, but just wanted to bring that up.
Cool. All right. I'll, oh, Mr. Skilling, sorry, I wasn't on. Um, so just since we're going to do first reading is the next step on this, what about the amendments to the amendments of the amendments? What are we doing with those? Are we going to, we haven't discussed the first one, this exploratory committee. Are we going to take these amendments and insert them as for first reading so that the public sees them or, or was that our goal tonight to say consensus on adding any or one or all of these?
It looks like Mr. Cox is poised to answer that question.
Well, except to the extent that these things have been discussed, so I would defer to the chair and to Mr. Gruskin for any, uh, plan that you came forward with for the amendments. I haven't been briefed explicitly on those. I can speak to what we would generally do, but was there a game plan?
Well, I think we should probably with these two things make a consensus, find consensus on whether we want to include the fishbowl and the catch-up provision and the exploratory committee. Also, if there are any other ideas from council, one of the, one of my questions, Mr. Gruskin, is about electioneering. There is a practice called ballot harvesting where groups of people get together and say, you know, if you need us to take your ballot. As, as the mailings go in, as ballots are mailed back to the county, the clerk updates the list of who has not yet returned their ballots. And folks will go out and say, you know, or will contact those folks and say, can we take your ballots in for you? But some folks will also say, while we're at it, did you vote for Gus Thompson for council and if, or did you vote for Ward 6 for council? And if not, would you consider voting for Gus Thompson? That would seem to me to be electioneering. And since we no longer have polling place per se, we have the mail-in ballot, that would seem to be electioneering within a few feet of the ballot box or the, uh, the method of casting a ballot. So is there any way we can prevent that kind of, I'll take it for you, but will you vote for so-and-so?
Aren't we limited via the state that says you can only bring 10 ballots?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, but you got 100 people working for the same candidate you're talking about, 1,000 votes.
America.
Yeah. I know.
I, I think, I think you're in a little bit of a, if, if someone goes door-to-door, knocks on your door, asks if you voted, ask if you'll vote for Councilwoman X, as long as you're at it, you don't know if you're 100 feet from their ballot. You don't know if it's upstairs in the, in the back study or if it's, you know, right there on the mail table.
Oh, but they deliver the ballot to you eventually and you're within 100 feet there. So.
I think you're, you're going to encounter some very interesting First Amendment issues.
Okay. And you see no other way of?
Well, you, when you, when you do that knock, you have to disclose who's paying you under the, under this ordinance. So it can't just be, hi, I'm here because I care about democracy. If you're being paid to do it, it is an election, it is a communication that is otherwise distributed and therefore part of your pitch has to be, hi, I'm here for, to see if you've voted. By the way, I'd love for you to vote for Councilwoman X and I'm being paid by neighbors for a really good neighborhood, Charlie Abel, registered agent, not authorized by any candidate.
Okay, but, and if it's a volunteer?
Volunteers are exempt, right?
But volunteers are still subject to the 10-ballot rule under state law.
So basically you're saying there's no hedge we can put in there to prevent that sort of influence?
I, I can't conceive of a, of a way to kind of restrict on that level of speech, no.
Okay. Thank you.
So to that point, do you want to start at the, do you want to strike the $20? Is there consensus? And I'm sure you are familiar, I know you're familiar with the 1999 parties, right? Where everybody would come and donate 1999 and you could get 100 people there and you raise a lot of money and you don't have to disclose. And so that was part of this discussion. You disclose everything, whether it's $5 or $25, the piece of paper is the same. So does council want to, and, and if we don't have a consensus, it can still be brought to the floor, but do you want to do something with that, eliminate the fishbowl exception? So I'm, Frank wants to get rid of the fishbowl, period. So let's move that into the ordinance. Looks like there's a consensus.
And just, just to be clear, this piece of paper probably needs to be clarified. It would be about striking the current provision that, that exists rather than inserting a new provision. Just, just for clarity's sake.
Although you know what? I don't think we need to go, we should go down this process because we're not taking votes tonight. So I think these should just be prepared as potential amendments. Yeah. Yep. So we'll just, we'll just leave these three and then we can have some more conversation on second reading. And I may need to reach out because the second one, I'm really confused. The 183rd day, the 63rd day. So it gets a little bit. I, I've read a few times, I don't understand it, so.
Fair enough.
And it sounds like I'm not alone. Okay. Anything else and we'll go to public input? Okay. First up, Ms. Feeley. Good evening. Welcome.
Thanks. Well, I'm Pam Feeley. I live in Ward 3 and I've been filing campaign finance reports for federal, state, and Lakewood. Federal since '05, state since '06, and Lakewood since '07. So actually this for me would be much cleaner than what we've had in the past. So I'm real excited to see it go forward. And the committee worked really well. They, I got to attend many of their meetings.
Before you leave, Ms. Feeley, could you, I failed to mention your comment about, uh.
The small donor committees?
Small donor committees. We're looking at letting them do 100 bucks a person, but you were saying.
Okay, there are like, um, there are small donor committees that already exist and they can only take $50. They are not going to increase their contribution for a local election to $100 if they play in the state pile, because the state right now says 50. So it would be a small donor committee that would be formed just for Lakewood, that would do the 100. So I think it would be very confusing to track it. And I did ask some treasurers of some various small donor committees around and they were like, we're just going to stay at the 50. So that was the feedback I got.
And for folks who don't know, Ms. Feeley is also considered an expert in Colorado campaign finance and she attended every one of our meetings. We had public comment during those meetings and she was very forthcoming and I think was almost the sixth committee member. So we, we really appreciate your input.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Patrick, come on down. Good evening, welcome.
Thanks. Just some short comments. So thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to your municipal campaign finance code. My name is Patrick Payyandi. I'm the policy manager at Colorado Common Cause. Colorado Common Cause is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that works for open, honest, and accountable government and seeks to strengthen public participation. The organization I represent has been instrumental in many electoral and campaign finance reforms in Colorado. For example, we led and enacted Amendment 41, which blunted the influence of big-moneyed lobbyists, put a stopper in the revolving door between public and private sectors, and created the state's Ethics Commission. More recently, Colorado Common Cause helped with the passage of Amendments Y and Z, the independent redistricting commission, ballot measures, ensuring that representatives represent the public fairly. Today, however, I want to express our general support for the campaign finance reforms in question. There are many laudable improvements found in the ordinance, too many to list here, but a few that stand out to us include the increased reports required of the candidates and issue committees, the reduction in contribution limits for mayoral and city council candidates, disclosure and disclaimer requirements for political communications, banning the influence of foreign entities, closing the loophole that allowed people to exceed contribution limits by donating through their LLCs, all of which, most of these have been discussed already here. And just as importantly, the ordinance empowers the city clerk to find committees which fail to abide by the disclaimer requirements. And we would support, you know, as was just discussed here, adding clarifying internet and web communications as well. And as the policy manager at Colorado Common Cause, I want people to trust their local government. It's hard for all of us to do that when undisclosed money places its thumb upon the scales, making the process unfair. Adopting the proposed ordinance here in Lakewood is certainly a step in the right direction and a step toward making sure the democratic process is fair and that it's honest. So thank you for your time and thanks for working on this.
Thank you very much. Ms. Peters, come on down. Good evening, welcome.
Hi. Formerly Vicki Peters known to some of you, recently deciding to use my middle name, Lee.
Okay.
L-E-I-G-H. And I too wanted to give my thanks. I'm very excited to see Lakewood showing the leadership and the tremendous amount of work that has obviously gone into this ordinance thus far. I spent a lot of, I haven't been able to attend the meetings, the committee meetings, but I, I've spent a lot of time looking at it and the substance is great and I'm great admiration for Mr. Gruskin, but it's, it's in pretty difficult shape right now. And so I, I just hope, I understand that there's an imperative to get it done, maybe if you can, before the next election. But I would really encourage the committee to keep working on it and allow Mr. Gruskin the time that he needs to, to, to pretty it up. And there are some organizational issues, there's some work in progress issues, some inconsistencies, and I would hate to see, after all of this work and dedication, for it to go in and creating a lot of problems and, and questions. So I hope you can do that. I support all of the highlights that you mentioned. It is complicated stuff. And I was, I was a candidate once and campaign finance was the most daunting part of it. You know, am I going to screw that up? So I appreciate that you appreciate that we don't want it to be an impediment to candidates. Just briefly, there are a couple of things. We talked about the, the whole digital issue. I think it's more than just a definition. I think, I think the committee and Mr. Gruskin really need to think about each and every provision and figure out how it would be, how it would affect the digital world. For example, there's a provision in there that says if, if it's an ad on TV, you know, it has to be so big and play for so long. Well, what about, how long does it have to be if it's a pop-up ad on, on a, you know, on the computer? Or, um, uh, if you're paying somebody to, to troll the internet and, or, and look for opportunities to comment, you know, is that a communication? I mean, I can't, I, I'm not that savvy on this stuff, but I, I really think that somebody needs to go through it and just concentrate on that issue because that's where we're going. So I will, I will stop there and thank you once again.
Thank you, Lee. All right. Anybody else? Yes, please, come on down. If you want to stop by the clerk's desk too and just sign in, that'd be much appreciated. And while he's doing that, Lee, I'd say if, if you have some of those glaring instances or examples, maybe share them with Counselor Abel and he can check that out.
I don't have one.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just.
Thank you. Just putting my own timer going, but thanks, Mayor and City Council for letting me speak. I'm Owen Perkins. I'm the president of Clean Slate Now Action, which is a campaign finance reform organization working nationally and based here in Colorado. And I'm also a member of the Newspaper Guild. And I should mention, there is a major campaign finance reform that just was passed in Denver with 71% of the vote and a win in every precinct that does a lot of what you're doing. It dramatically lowers the contribution limits to be more in keeping with the state limits as you've done. It bans corporations from donating as you've done. It requires, it required disclosure in an earlier draft and council adopted that before this got to the ballot. And let's see, with a big thing it does is it does add public financing. And I would strongly encourage you to continue researching public financing and consider putting that in. That has a huge effect on voter engagement. You talked about not wanting to discourage people from running. It encourages more and more people to run, more women to run, more people of color to people to run, more women to run, more people of color to run, more young people to run. You get a much more diverse legislature that really reflects the community they come from. I'm in support of everything in here, I think. I think it's a great step forward. Really happy you all are taking this initiative. There's one big question I had, and it did just come up, about the small donor committees. And I'm not sure that going from 50 to 100, as is the standard, 50 is the standard statewide, that going to 100 helps encourage people to use it. I think what encourages people to use it a lot, and what I really focus on is small donor empowerment. And the small donor committee statewide is $50. Denver adopted one just now for $50. But they give, they're able to give much more to a candidate. So statewide, you can give roughly 10 times more as a small donor committee than the limit is for a regular individual. You have allowed them to give twice as much, I think, as a regular individual. I would consider lowering it back to 50 to be consistent with the state and other municipalities, and maybe add the incentive on the amount that they can give, making it maybe four times as much instead of twice as much, given that the statewide standard is about 10 times as much. Let's see, just wrap up pretty quickly here. The fishbowl thing, I would do away with any anonymous reporting. I have been to a campaign event where they say, give us a 20, we'll give you a penny. And I don't like anonymous contributions, so I think if you can do away with that, that's great. And I would encourage, I don't know exactly where you are on the rap, on the access of the reports, but I hope that in addition to the ease of filing those reports, it's easy for people to access them. And that's about my time. So thank you very much. I think this is a great proposal, and I'd be happy to talk more about what we've done in Denver that you'll see implemented soon.
Right, thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for everybody that came out. And luckily, all of our reports, I think going back to 2007, are online and pretty easily accessible if you can get to that page on our main website. But once you get there, it's all there, nice and easy.
Cool.
Well, I think we are good to continue working and see this back in a week, and then adoption coming up in a couple weeks.
Does council have any feeling on the $50 limit for small donor committees?
So there's some consensus to follow, so.
The statewide $50 limit?
We could produce language, and that would just be another amendment. Just add it to the list of three, and we'll have four.
And we discussed the exploratory committee. Do you want to bring that back as well?
Well, my suggestion was that we would just bring everything that was already there back for a formal look. So that'd be exploratory, catch-up, Heinz catch-up, and the fishbowl, and now the small donor, and then anything else council might have. In the meantime, based on feedback that has been received, we can do that. Mr. LeBeur?
I know this won't be a catch-all or solve-all the problems, but do we want to look at maybe adding that, an electionarian communication, adding that internet component to it, or in the definition?
Yeah, I think there was consensus for that.
And Ms. Harrison had a question about GoFundMe, which does not provide individual names for contributions. Should we address that in some form? And I wasn't aware that they would fund campaigns, but.
Well, you could set up an account and just say, send me money.
Basically, a GoFundMe would be a political committee that would, if it gave, would be subject to reporting or would have a complaint filed against it, whoever organized the GoFundMe.
And one of the things we were also considering is that we put some teeth in here. The thought came up in committee that an independent expenditure committee could break all our rules and just walk. They could be found in violation and fined, and we wanted to add some language that we can use any legal method of collection, so that they couldn't just walk away from their obligation. We could pursue them through debt collection. Is that, did we put that in here? And should we? I know Denver has it specifically in their ordinance.
That was originally in Amendment 27, in the constitutional provision, and we could come up with an amendment to adapt language, giving the city authority to pursue, after the complaint process is resolved, pursue collection.
I'd like to see that. Is there, there?
So it looks like there's consensus. Now, would you, are you just limiting this to, and I'll get to my end part of this. I worry about the penalization of individuals who may not have done something right on their filings and were subjected to a fine, and then going to collections over trying to do that. So are you limiting it to just small donors?
No, I think we were going to limit it to extra territorial, I guess, entities, PACs and independent expenditure committees. Should we extend it to everyone in order to be?
I think you might have an equal protection issue if you don't, but you should know, one provision that hasn't been highlighted is that while the clerk's authority to both commence the complaint process and impose fines and collect fines is clear, there's also a process for the clerk to waive fines where there has been a good faith error or there's been substantial compliance. So as, because the committee was very sensitive to the fact that a lot of candidate committees in particular are driven by citizen efforts and volunteers and people doing their very best, but they may overlook a single donation or a single reporting event. So you may have that protection in a different way, and you should know that that very process reflects what the Secretary of State is empowered to do currently. So you've got that level of protection.
And one other thing it does is give Margie the ability to notify candidates that they haven't met a deadline. And instead of fining them immediately, they get 72 hours to cure, which we thought was.
Yep, it's good.
Would cover those bases and remove other impediments.
So with that said, then, there's consensus that council wants to do something along these lines, but I think we need a little bit better direction as to what entities this should cover, or it sounds like it needs to just cover everybody.
I guess so.
So, does council want to go forth with that sort of provision?
Okay.
As an additional amendment?
One thing you could do is set a dollar amount, so that any fine exceeding X, so that it's a significant fine, would merit these collection efforts. And then I think you might effectively go after entities that are spending much more money and reporting in a less-than-compliant way.
And Margie's ability to waive fines would also help protect the little guy or lady who wants to run.
We'll put out $1 million.
Yeah, we were looking at that, Mayor, thinking of when you cash that big check.
All right.
Charlie's Fishbowl.
Charlie's Fishbowl is going to be full. So, anything else? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out, weighing in. We'll go to reports. Ms. Hodson, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Cox, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to say and thank the community and thank the staff and all the volunteers that made Lakewood Lights a wonderful success this year. Just got incredible feedback from so many people who really enjoyed it. We had a great turnout from council. I apologize, Counselor Vida was there. We did not see him, and he did not get a ride on the fire truck. So we'll have to make that up to you next year. We had an incredible Santa Claus as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Tomorrow is Colorado Gives Day. Great opportunity for you to support one of your favorite charities, if you're so inclined. But that's a great opportunity, and that is all that I have. So I'll start all the way down here on my left. Mr. LeBeur?
Thank you. I just want to mention that we're going to have our, I've been told not to use this term, but it's the only one I can think of right now, retreat in the near future, towards the end of, oh, planning session, excuse me, towards the end of January. I don't remember the specific date, but, yeah, 26, thank you. So we're going to be getting to all of you soon to give you sort of a little update on some of the plans there. And Counselor Vincent's going to back me up, because I only remember two points that I wrote down, so she's going to get the other couple. But one of the things, items that we're going to have is we're going to have a speaker. It's going to be one. It'll be relatively limited, especially as it relates to last year. I know that we had speakers for a little bit longer. And then also, we'll be reviewing sort of how 2018 went, our sort of successes and opportunities. So those are just a couple of components that we'll go over during that time. And Counselor Vincent, I don't know if she wants to jump in and add the other elements first?
We're just going way out of order.
I'll help. It's one consistent thought, and then we can go back again. Yeah, we will be doing the review. Because we always seem to be cramped for time, we are going to have a working lunch where we'll have report outs and such. We will have some prep work that'll need to be done, and there'll be more information about that, and Jacob and myself, information will be sent out about that in the very near future. And we're going to spend a great deal of time talking about our priorities for next year, for 2019.
Okay. Does that exhaust your report?
It does.
Mr. Abel?
Exhausted.
Ms. Harrison?
Two things. First of all, I wanted to tell everyone what a great Ward Five meeting we had last Saturday, discussion about Metro West Housing's new Sage Corner, which was an interesting discussion. We'll just put it at that. So we got lots of feedback from the neighborhood and good stuff to take into consideration. We'll have a repeat of that same discussion coming up this Saturday, but at a different location. This will be at the Westwood Community Church, which is at Wadsworth and Woodard. If you think of where Lubie Chivalier lay, it's immediately south of there, beginning at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday. Those of you who were not able to attend last Saturday, we'd certainly love to have you there. Also, I'd like to make sure that everyone knows that there is a wonderful opportunity to hear wonderful music and singing coming up Thursday and Friday, where there'll be a combined choral and orchestra presentation by the Lakewood Symphony Orchestra and the Colorado Mormon Corral. Wonderful Christmas music. And if you want to get the feeling, this is where you come. It's at, it will be held at the West Jewell Building, which is 6465 West Jewell Avenue. It begins at 7:30 p.m. both Thursday evening and Friday evening. And I'll tell you, if you aren't believing in Santa and Christmas by the time you get out of there, there's no hope for you. So we'd certainly love to have you. Thank you.
Counselor Skilling?
I would like to say thank you to our staff, Mr. Parker, et al., for today's meeting. We had our development dialogue meeting. We started site design this morning at 9:00 a.m. Thank you to the public who attended. I have to say, I thought it was a very good meeting. But then again, all of our development dialogue committee meetings are very good meetings. I would encourage all of the public to attend two weeks from now, when we will do another 9:00 a.m. Monday start, to finish up our site design. And so the council is aware, we do have the mixed-use stuff coming up January 7, and site design should be done fairly soon as well. And so those things are coming up. That's it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Abel?
No report.
Ms. Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I wanted to make sure folks know that on December 12, 5:30, we have the next ad hoc housing committee meeting. This is where we will finalize a very high-level draft of what the Go Forward Housing Policy Committee will do. So please feel free to come and attend that. And we will not have a Ward Four meeting this month. So just wanted to remind folks.
Mr. Vida?
No report.
Ms. Vincent?
Okay, there's the Okane House lighting in Okane Park by the Okane Neighborhood tomorrow at 7:00 o'clock. So it should be fine. It'll be in Okane. And next Tuesday, we have the Two Creeks Lighting Contest. For those of you in the Two Creeks neighborhood, be sure to enter your house, because there's some wonderful prizes. And the top prize is called the counselor's prize, and it'll be given by the counselors.
All right. Very nice. We'll be back here next Monday for a regular meeting, and then we'll take three weeks off. So come back and see us, and thank you. We'll adjourn. 10:40. Agent Hipwell, thank you, sir. Be safe tonight.